Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the city council may be conducted via remote participation. Please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website and will be available for future review. We have an unusually large crowd here tonight. It's not like this every week. And I want to say emphatically that each and every one of you is welcome here tonight. I want to note that we have to be observant of capacity issues. So please, at all times, make sure that the doors, the walkways, are kept free. There is additional room right down the hall on the right in the committee room. The meeting is being shown on a television there. It is my role and my responsibility and our role to run an orderly meeting to make sure that everyone is able to be heard respectfully. And I'm counting and trusting on all of us to make that the reality tonight. And I also just want to say, in case there's any misunderstanding, there is not a public hearing tonight. Tonight, the city council is going to do the business on our agenda. And we always accept public comment at publiccomments@somervillema.gov. And we really do read these. And obviously, many of you have already reached out to us directly. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Said.
Present.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Mbah. Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Penita Nufeld.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Here.
With nine counselors present and two absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. And Counselor Scott intends to join us virtually soon. And Counselor Mbah intends to be here later as well. So, folks, we often take up items out of order at the beginning of the meeting when there are members of the public here. And tonight, we know that everyone is here to discuss Agenda Item 4.12. So we're going to take that up first. That's a resolution that I've sponsored regarding a ceasefire in Gaza. We're going to take that item first. And for those who aren't familiar with the rules of the city council, the president presides over the meeting. But when, as a counselor, I'm introducing an item, I go down to a desk and the vice president takes over. So I'd like to ask Counselor Penita Nufeld to please preside.
Colleagues, welcome. Good evening. We all want to stay on track with this meeting. We all know tensions are high this evening and we have an entire agenda ahead of us. Let me be clear tonight. Hate speech of any kind will not be tolerated in this room. If counselors are willing to limit the speakers they sponsor in any way, even down to zero, and limit their own comments to a few minutes each, we can address the item itself and move on to the rest of the business of the city council. But that is up to the will of the body. So with that, I will turn it over to Counselor Ewan Campin.
Do you want to read the item?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Item 4.12 is a resolution by Counselor Ewan Campin in support of an enduring ceasefire in Gaza.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by saying that I know that every single person in this room is here grieving and is thinking about lives that have been lost. I know that this is an incredibly difficult and painful thing to think about and to talk about. And I want to thank each and every person for being here tonight. Everyone who has reached out to me over the last several months. And of course, everyone who has reached out over the last several days. And I just want to say again emphatically, whether you are opposed to this resolution, whether you're in support of it, whether you wish that we weren't even taking it up, all of us are part of one community. Tomorrow, we will all wake up as neighbors. And I want to thank you for being here. So I am going to be brief. I want to take a minute to talk about what inspired me to draft this resolution and why I believe from the bottom of my heart that this is the right thing to do. I'm going to try to get through this without crying. For anyone who knows me, you know that it was not a decision I came to lightly. This is something that I have wrestled with for months. Not my support for a ceasefire, but I have absolutely wrestled with the decision to file a resolution to the council. The Hamas attacks on October 7th were the single largest mass murder of Jews, my own ethnic group, in my lifetime. More than 100,000 people internally displaced in Israel, and worse. And as a Jew, as a human being, I have felt trapped in an endless loop of grieving, of horror, a feeling of paralysis. And I know that I am not alone in those feelings. And since that time, for the last 100-plus days, we are now seeing a military campaign that has been one of the most devastating bombing campaigns of our generation. Tens of thousands of people killed, huge numbers of them children. Something like 2 million people now homeless and hungry, on the brink of starvation, being denied basic humanitarian aid. All of this is documented. It is impossible to fathom suffering on these levels. And I know that there is not a person in this room who wants that suffering to continue. And I am one of many, many people in our community who believes that this needs to end, and it needs to end now. And a ceasefire means that the military action on both sides stops. I looked at a dictionary before drafting this, in case there was any confusion about that word. A ceasefire is a suspension of fighting, typically one during which peace talks take place, a truce, often resulting from the intervention of a third party. And if you follow the news, we know that the United States is going to play a huge role as that third party. We believe that a ceasefire is the first step that is necessary to stop the death, for the humanitarian aid to begin to flow in, for the hostages to be freed, for the international community to come together and to work towards a lasting peace. That is what this resolution is calling for. A number of people who are opposed to this resolution have asked me, "Why waste the city council's time on an international issue we have no control over?" I understand this criticism. I think it deserves a response. Here's my response. One of the tools that this city council has is the ability to file resolutions to advocate to the levels of government above us, to our own government. We regularly discuss resolutions about state and federal issues, on international issues. And we do so to advocate to our own elected officials. In this case, this resolution is not being sent to the Israeli government, Palestinian government. It's being sent to our government, advocating for our elected officials to do everything in their power to change U.S. policy. Secondly, this is an issue that is deeply important to many, many people in our community. And as a matter of fact, for everyone who has reached out to me and told me the city council should not spend time on this, I have probably heard from an equal or more people angry, confused, that I hadn't done it sooner. And the simple truth is that this is coming from the bottom of my heart. My moral convictions compelled me to draft this resolution, pure and simple. And before closing, I wanted to share a conversation that's very meaningful to me that I had on Tuesday with a leader in the local Israeli-American community, someone I respect greatly, strongly opposed to me bringing this resolution. And that person said to me, they said, "Ben, it is clear to me that you went out of your way to write this resolution in a way that's attempting to find common ground." And I acknowledge that. There are parts of it, things you said, things you didn't say, that I find really painful, really offensive. And I spent hours trying to think of changes that you could make that would matter to me. But in the end, the truth is that I believe I'm opposed to bringing this resolution at all. And I don't think that there are changes that you could make that would make that go away because I'm worried about the divisiveness that that will bring in our community. And that struck me. And I believe it allowed us to end the conversation in a place of respectful disagreement. This is a person who I think shares basically all of my values on this, but who worries that bringing this causes division and that it's painful to bring up and that it makes people feel unsafe and targeted. In my opinion, maybe I'm naive. In my opinion, the way that we show respect to one another is to express ourselves honestly, even on painful and difficult decisions. That is why I brought this forward, why I look forward to hearing from my colleagues and the people that they sponsor if they choose to, and why I'm asking us to vote on this tonight. And just lastly, before I have two speakers that I'd like to sponsor who've promised me that they'll be brief. And before I introduce them, I just want to say, last night, I was at an interfaith vigil in Copley Square with religious leaders of all faiths and our Congresswoman calling for a ceasefire. And the refrain that the faith leaders kept repeating was, "Every life lost is a whole world lost, and every life saved is a whole world saved." And that is my hope. I'd like to sponsor two speakers, Alan Jalen and Jamal Halawa. Alan Jalen is a Somerville resident. He'll introduce himself. He's a descendant of Holocaust survivors. He's a Jew himself. And Jamal Halawa is a Somerville educator, longtime resident, a Palestinian-American. And, you know, Madam Chair, you just said this. I'd just like to ask all of us to... We're going to hear a lot of different voices and opinions tonight. And I'd just like to ask all of us to keep in mind that we need to run an orderly meeting. We need to be able to move on this. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm here to urge you to adopt the ceasefire resolution brought by Councilmember Ewan Campin. Simply put, voting for a ceasefire signals to Palestinian and Arab-Americans and Muslims in Somerville that our lives matter. My name is Jamal Halawa. I'm a Palestinian-American and a Muslim and the son of an immigrant. I've lived in Somerville for 19 years. I've been teaching at the high school and working alongside many people to build our educators' union and to help fund college-bound undocumented Somerville grads. I'm raising five children here. My 11-year-old daughter, Moon, is here tonight. My father is from Nablus in the West Bank. He was 16 years old when the Israeli army started their now 57-year-long illegal occupation of the West Bank. My father describes his teens as a time of disappearances, humiliations, and random violence, all at the hands of the Israeli military. He was 18 years old when they kicked down the door of his father's house and woke him up, the youngest son with guns in his face. They took him away and tortured him for three days. The Israeli army stripped him, beat him, and sicced their dogs at him, then kicked him out of their prison at night. The city was under curfew and Israeli patrols were poised to shoot on sight. But his captors just laughed at my father and told him to run. My father made it home somehow, but understood he was a dead man if he stayed. His mother understood that too, and she sent her youngest son away from Israeli violence as she had done for her four older sons. My father only saw his mother, my teta, three more times in her life. Ask any Palestinian. The same has happened to all our families. We all have this story. They say this is a war against terrorism. Well, Palestinians have been terrorized by the Zionist groups and Israeli army for almost over 75 years. It's been a slow genocide, marked by scores of massacres, or as the Israeli army calls it, mowing the lawn. Now we're witnessing the most intense bombings since World War II, waged on a civilian population of 2.3 million Palestinians, trapped in 140 square miles, that is Gaza. Over 25,000 people have been killed by the Israeli army in 110 days. Thousands are unaccounted for and presumably buried in the rubble. More than 10,000 children have been murdered by the Israeli army. That's double the amount of kids in the Somerville public schools. 10,000 kids. What crime did they commit? They aren't in Hamas. They never voted. Does anyone here believe that their mothers love them any less than your mother loves you? The Israeli army and settlers are killing kids in the West Bank too, where Hamas does not exist. A couple of days ago, an American kid from New Orleans named Taufik, visiting family near Ramallah, he was killed by Israeli bullets. And the denial of our humanity stretches across the sea. Here in Somerville, teenagers protesting the genocide have been insulted and accosted by grown adults. Graffiti hateful to Gazans have been scrawled on the Cross Street Bridge. Palestinian business owners have been harassed by cowards. In my father's neighborhood in Chicago, six-year-old Wadia was stabbed to death in his home. And in our backyard in Burlington, Vermont, three college kids in Kaffiyah were shot on the street. Were these Arabs, Muslims, and Palestinian-Americans members of Hamas terrorists? In Gaza, 25,000 kids are newly orphaned. 25,000 kids are orphans. We learned a new acronym, unique to Gaza, WCNSF, wounded child, no surviving family. For 16 years, Gaza was acknowledged as the world's largest open-air prison. Now the U.N. Secretary General calls Gaza a graveyard for children. Israel has cut off water and food and medical care, and the army and citizens of Israel are actively blocking the aid the world is trying to bring to them. Yesterday, the Israeli military opened fire on people waiting in line for food in Gaza City, killing at least 20 more Palestinians. Every day, my students at Somerville High ask me how this is still happening. They see more and more dead Palestinian kids on social media every day. My students ask me why this is being allowed to happen and why is there silence from our leaders? Here's our chance to speak against this violence. Understand that if you vote against this symbolic gesture of a ceasefire resolution, you are signaling to many, many people in Somerville that our lives do not matter. This vote might be symbolic. You might think it's not in your purview. But we always need to vote for peace. Vote for an end to violence and vote for justice for people who are suffering an unimaginable cost. No parent should have to collect the pieces of their child in a plastic bag and bury in a mass grave. No child should have their brothers and uncles and fathers stripped and beaten and disappeared or see their mothers bloodied, broken, and gray with dust smashed into oblivion. No human life should be devalued in this way. I implore you to vote for a ceasefire.
Mr. Jalen? We need to keep the meeting moving, please.
My name is Alan Jalen. I live on Dane Street. I am a Jew. My family came here after World War II from France, where my father had been in a Nazi concentration camp. And this is a portrait of my father that was painted in the concentration camp by an artist who was also a prisoner there. My father survived, but there were many close relatives whom I never got to meet because they were killed. And I have cousins in Israel. It makes me furious that the Israeli government is using Holocaust victims like my family as a justification for slaughtering Palestinians. Mass bombing, systematic demolition of homes, depriving everyone of food and water have nothing to do with defending Jews. I'm glad that hundreds of thousands of American Jews and also many Israeli Jews feel, as I do, that the lesson to us from centuries of oppression, capped by the murder of millions, is that nobody should ever go through that again. Not just Jews, nobody. Every human life is equal. If Israeli Jews are ever going to be safe, they have to recognize the equal rights, human rights, political rights, property rights, of every Palestinian. That's what could stop Hamas, not killing more Palestinians with American bombs, which only brings them more recruits. So I urge you to vote for the ceasefire resolution tonight. Now, I know there are counselors who feel this is not a matter for the Somerville city government. It's divisive. We have enough problems agreeing on city matters without this. I respect the people who feel that way. And in another situation, I might agree. But this is an emergency. Thousands of people are dying. They don't have food or clean water. Large parts of the country have been destroyed already. More neighborhoods are bulldozed every day, and the United States could stop it. This is like the Vietnam War, where horrors were also happening every day. You probably, all of you, well, yeah, I think probably all of you are too young to remember. But those of us who were trying to stop that war reached for every possible way to express public opposition. So we demonstrated. We sat in. We occupied buildings. And we did ask local governments and organizations of all sorts to take a stand. And some of them did. And they helped bring the war to a close faster, which saved lives. So again, I ask you to vote for this exceptional emergency resolution tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Burnley, you have folks to sponsor.
Through the chair. I'd first like to start by thanking everyone who showed up tonight. I want to express my gratitude to the neighbors, friends, and city staff whom I have seen rallying in the streets in the hopes that their government will act to end the recent atrocities committed against the Palestinian people. For many in this room right now and around our community, this resolution represents a spark of hope in a sea of chaos and despair. For 110 days, we have borne witness to history at its most brutal. For 110 days, the apartheid state of Israel has dropped tens of thousands of bombs on Gaza, destroying more than 70% of the homes, killing more than 25,000 people, injuring and maiming more than twice that many people, while reducing the number of fully functioning hospitals from 36 to zero. Nearly 2 million people have been displaced, forced to walk miles with little to no food, water, or medicine because of the decades-long siege that Israel has placed Gaza under. Often, the areas, the roads, the refugee camps that they are told to go to are bombed or targeted by sniper fire. Due to these unbearable conditions, the lives of roughly 50,000 pregnant women are in danger. Miscarriages have spiked by more than 300% and C-sections are forced to be performed without anesthesia. Ceasefire means reproductive justice. While the events I've described are thousands of miles away, the money and weapons that fuel this war are not. The United States sends more than $3 billion in military aid to Israel every year using our tax dollars without any conditions. Likewise, the impact of these decisions reverberate through our community as is wholly evident tonight. According to a poll conducted this week, 1 in 3 Americans believe that Israel is carrying out a genocide in Gaza, with another 3 undecided. So let me be clear for those who believe that this effort represents an unacceptable foray into foreign policy. Like my colleague, Counselor Ewan Campin, I believe that this resolution is not about the Somerville City Council asking Hamas or the state of Israel to do anything. This is about demanding that our federal government use its incredible political and financial leverage to end an ongoing genocide that our tax dollars are funding. Ceasefire means ending this one-sided massacre. Finally, this resolution is about what kind of community we are. Perhaps for some of my colleagues, this issue is abstract. I know that unlike most of the folks sitting around this horseshoe, I've had the opportunity to visit Palestine, to travel around Jerusalem and the West Bank, to experience the nearly unfathomable warmth of the Palestinian people who welcomed me in, taught me to dance. Depka offered me food and a place to sleep, told me stories of their families, all while showing their steadfast resilience in the face of an omnipresent military occupation. In their hearts and in mine, from the sea to the river, Palestine will live forever. But even if this is abstract to some of my colleagues, it is not for our residents, for the city staff, for everyone who for 110 days have been afraid that the actions of our government mean that we do not believe Palestinian lives matter. We have a duty to listen to our constituents, to demand that our elected leaders put pressure on President Biden and to end this genocide before it is too late. Ceasefire means never again, for anyone. I'll close by saying shukran. And I would like to sponsor community members Karina Kirban and Jake Margolin to speak. No, Karina first.
One moment.
Oh, she wanted me to... Sorry.
I just want to note for the record that Counselor Mbah arrived at 7:24 p.m. and Counselor Scott joined online at 7:05 p.m. Madam Clerk.
Hi, all. My name is Jake Margolin. I was born and raised in Somerville near Ball Square, and I'm a proud member of our local Jewish community. I have my bar mitzvah at TBB, and I graduated Somerville High School in 2015. I've been a renter here since 2020 because I love this city. And I'm here to support the ceasefire resolution precisely because of the Somerville values and the Jewish values that I learned growing up here. So, thanks, Counselor Burnley, for sponsoring me and to everyone here in support. So my Jewish values, like justice and Takun Olam, which means repair the world, and the way that I understand Jewish safety inform my support as I'm part of a movement of local American Jews against Israel's apartheid system and against the ongoing genocide attempt in Gaza. As Jews, we know our safety is tied to sharing a common humanity. We are all safer. We are all safer if we agree that every life and every community has value, no matter how they worship or what side of the fence they live on. And so, we as a city cannot be complacent towards the mass killing of an entire group of people, like in Gaza. Our strong multicultural values help keep us safe. But living those values means rejecting racist mass killings as they're unfolding in real time, right? So when the Israeli army claims to support Jewish people by committing war crimes, I say no, not in our name. And as each of our taxes help fund these war crimes, the City of Somerville must also say a clear no. Because ultimately, the safety of Jews and Palestinians are intertwined. The death and destruction in Gaza fails to keep Jews safe and entrenches a future of more war, right? And ultimately, we know that, you know, this is the only real first step in a long-term path to peace. A ceasefire is the only real step towards peace. And because our country enables these crimes, this violence is absolutely your place to speak out against. Again, each of our taxes helps fund these war crimes. And in a community as progressive and pro-peace as ours, Gaza falls squarely in your purview. Voting no on this would not line up with the Somerville values or priorities that I know. Because when I see the suffering in Gaza, I see this mass dehumanizing of people amid nationalist violence, and I say never again. Normalizing the atrocities against civilians in Gaza makes all Jews and members of marginalized groups everywhere less safe. And this goes beyond the clear statement of our values. Passing this matters, guys. It'll really reverberate in important ways. And so, I want to leave you by saying that less than two weeks after Martin Luther King Jr. Day, I hope we can honor his message that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And I hope this council does not choose to stay neutral in a time of such moral crisis. Thank you.
Before you begin, as a reminder, we have a long agenda ahead of us in addition to this item. I will ask you to hold your snaps and applause so we can continue in a timely way. Please.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Karina Kirban. I have been a Somerville resident since 2015, living on Josephine Ave. And I was born and raised in Boston. You've no doubt heard of the horrific numbers coming out of Gaza every single day, as well as the statistics detailed by the other speakers here, including the fact that over 25,000 people have been massacred, with over 10,000 of those being children. So I'm here as a constituent to tell my family's story. My family is originally from the south of Lebanon, a small village called Jiddit Merjayun, which is only a couple kilometers away from the Israeli border. Many families that are intermixed, like mine, Lebanese and Palestinian. Some have passports and others are stateless. And the distinction between those important statuses can be as small as those few kilometers. My grandfather Amal and his family, who were Protestant, grew up in the grew up in the famously well-integrated city of Haifa in Palestine. My grandfather rarely spoke of his childhood as it was painful for him to remember the happy times pre-1948. He and his family were expelled during the Nakba, which was the mass displacement and exodus of over 700,000 Palestinians as part of the creation of Israel. The schools his father built as a principal and educator were destroyed. Our land in Mutala in the Hola Valley was seized. While I still have a photo of my grandfather's Palestinian identity card, the only part of my family that still physically remains in Haifa is my great-grandmother, who is buried there in a small Christian cemetery. When my grandfather and his family buried their matriarch, a part of their spirit remained there, but they were never, ever able to visit Haifa or her grave ever again. My father Andrew, who is here tonight, he grew up in Beirut during the brutal 15-year Lebanese civil war. He and his family fled to Boston as refugees for good after Israel invaded Lebanon in 1982. As a child, he remembers his mother having them paint the insides of their windows blue to mask indoor light, making it harder for Israeli warplanes to bomb them. As we watched the indiscriminate bombing happening in Gaza, my Baba recalls how Israeli warplanes would drop bombs on the capital, stopping mere inches away from the American University of Beirut because it was associated with the United States. Even then, the US had influence over Israel's use of military force. This influence could have been used in Palestine so many times over the decades and especially over the last few months to avoid many innocent deaths. The same level of bombing precision was used by Israel in Beirut just this month, but we have never seen it applied to Gaza. I believe that this is because the Israeli military knows they will not face any repercussions for bombing Gaza indiscriminately unless we start to take action. During the 1982 to 2000 Israeli occupation of southern Lebanon, the army forcibly took control of my family's village of Mirrayun and made it their headquarters. Our ancestral home, built by my stonemason great-great-grandfather, was occupied by Israeli soldiers for nearly 20 years. When we got it back, they had completely destroyed it. Windows were smashed, furniture was charred, feces were smeared everywhere, and the words "Arabs Go to Hell" were burned into the wall. But we are still among the lucky ones who actually got our home back. My father and I co-founded a nonprofit where we have been working in the West Bank in the Aida Refugee Camp in Bethlehem for over 12 years. We work with partners here and on the ground there and focus on providing safe access to clean water, food security, education, and healthcare. We expanded to Balata Refugee Camp in Nablus last year, and we were supposed to expand to Gaza as well. One of our community health workers, Rasmi Adafat, was killed by the Israeli army in a night raid in Nablus just two months ago in November. While these night raids are common in the West Bank, even in times of supposed peace, they are happening now more than ever. At Wesleyan University in Connecticut, I co-founded the Schools Chapter of Students for Justice in Palestine in 2011. During that time, I tried to go to Palestine for research as I wrote my undergraduate thesis on Palestinian refugees in the West Bank and Lebanon. Instead, despite being a 20-year-old student with an American passport, the Israeli army detained me once I arrived at the Ben-Gurion Airport. I was then interrogated and humiliated for eight hours, denied entry, strip-searched, jailed, sexually harassed, assaulted, deported in handcuffs, and banned from the country indefinitely. And I was given no reason other than, quote, terrorism. And while it was indeed traumatic, it is absolutely nothing compared to what all Palestinians in the West Bank and Gaza endure every single day, even during supposed times of peace. It has been gut-wrenching to see Palestinians experience an accelerated genocide the last 110 days. It is extremely frustrating knowing that our tax dollars are complicit in this and seeing most politicians do nothing. I have all but lost hope in the people in power, but I have more faith than ever in the people of the world. Even just this week, many Israelis took to the streets in Tel Aviv and my grandfather's city of Haifa, demanding a ceasefire as well as an end to the occupation. Jewish Israelis begged countries to stop sending unconditional military aid to Israel because they know it's not being used for protection. It's being used to carry out a genocide. And as you've heard and will hear tonight, many members of our Somerville community, Jewish, Arab, and otherwise, feel the same way, that a ceasefire is just and the only way to stop the deaths of more innocent people. Many Arab diaspora families have been fighting for Palestine for decades because while our trauma is intergenerational, so is our resistance. This time, the people of the world have joined us, and we hope the Somerville City Council will too. We need a permanent ceasefire and for Israel to be held accountable. Because without both, the situation will just go back to what scholars like Noam Chomsky have called "an incremental genocide" instead of an accelerated one. My previously mentioned grandfather, his name was Amal. It means "hopes" in Arabic. And for a long time, hope has been the only thing we've been able to hold on to. And as your constituent, it is my hope for you tonight that you vote in favor of this ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Counselor Said, I believe you have someone to sponsor.
I want to start by taking a moment to recognize that there are a lot of civilians in a lot of different parts of the world that are impacted by wars or dealing with the aftermath of wars. Their experiences, their stories, and their suffering are making the news or getting the attention they deserve. In a lot of the emails I received this week, in a lot of conversations I had with community members about the ceasefire resolution, whether you're in favor or against it, I hear your pain and your suffering. It's been over 100 days of watching both Israeli and Palestinian lives being lost, of waiting for hostages to be released, of waiting for humanitarian aid to be allowed into Gaza. What keeps me up at night is thinking about the impact of this ongoing war on our shared humanity. I was a summer republic school teacher for seven years. After that experience of working with children here in the community, I can't help but look at things with a teacher's lens. What does our silence say about us as a humanity? What legacy are we going to leave for our children? What kind of world are we leaving for them? The children in our community watch Israeli children and elderly killed and taken hostage. They're watching Palestinian babies being taken out of the rubble. They're watching schools being bombarded. Being an immigrant city connects us to what's happening in the world. The pain of this conflict is being felt in our community. Thousands of innocent lives have been lost. Thousands of them are children. In the name of our shared humanity, this must end. I would like to sponsor Ivan Abarkat to speak.
Can you allow him to come forward, please? Focus on the floor.
Good evening, city councilors. Three months ago, on October 12th, I was honored to accept this citation that most of you signed. You acknowledge my contribution to the Somerville Latino community through my advocacy and outreach with different groups in the city. You gave me this award because of my commitment to social justice, equity, human rights, and improving our community. what was not mentioned about my life is that all my actions are motivated by my experience growing up in Mexico as a Sephardic Jew. I see my Judaism as a form of humanism in which we sanctify life. The other part of my life that was not mentioned is that I am a former diplomat of the Mexican government, and I cover Egypt, Syria, Jordan, Sudan, and autonomous territories of Palestine. 20 years ago, when I was a political and cultural counselor, my work consisted of providing advice, vision, strategy, and leadership on topics related to security, defense, political and cultural affairs. Another aspect of my life that nobody knows is that I lived and I studied in Israel, and I studied counterterrorism at the interdisciplinary center of Herzliya. I want to be clear. I am not here in front of you to defend the actions of Hamas or the Israeli government. I am here to speak up in favor of saving innocent Palestinians. I am here to speak up in favor of saving human lives, regardless of their religion, gender, or race. In my experience as a former diplomat and my current US citizenship, I have also worked with high-level government officials from the US, the Middle East, and Latin America to promote peace, mutual understanding of our cultures. Based on my experience in counterterrorism and geopolitical strategy, I can reassure you that voting in favor of a ceasefire is the most balanced, neutral, and human decision that you can make right now. I'm here in front of you to ask you to vote in favor of this ceasefire resolution, even if it is only symbolic. Symbolic actions are important and deeply meaningful for individuals and collectively because they can inspire change. If voting in favor of ceasefire resolution saves just one and only one symbolic life, then I am certain that this symbolic act of empathy will go a long way. Voting in favor of ceasefire does not make you less American, does not make you more or less pro-Israeli, and it does not make you more or less Palestinian. It will only make you more human. Toda rabbi.
I'd like to sponsor Rabbi Eliana Jacobowitz to speak.
I come to the meeting this evening to request that you do not vote in this resolution that is outside the scope of city business and tend to cause much pain and damage to a segment of this city's population. I lived here for the past 19 years, first at Porter Square and then at Ten Hills. For the past 15 years, I have been the rabbi of Temple of Nebedrit on Winter Hill. My roots here run deep, and I love this place that has come to not only be a true home, but also embodies for me the hope for a community that is committed to justice and human rights and to ensuring the well-being of its diverse immigrant population. I would like to not read to you. I would like to tell you why I'm here. I'm Israeli, as you can hear from my accent. I lived through two terrorist attacks. The first one was when I was 19. It was a blast explosion in Tel Aviv that killed my best friend, and I was lucky enough to just be thrown off. And you know how they show in the movies? When you wake up and you don't hear anything, you just see the stuff? Well, I can tell you that it's a pretty good depiction of what it's like. The second time was a stabbing attack on Purim morning in Jaffa, where a terrorist stabbed nine children who were waiting with their costumes for the Purim parade. This terrorist was finally stopped, but the person who jumped on him and stopped him was an Arab shop owner, and he died too. So I came to this country in part because I have PTSD and because I find it really hard to live there. I'm in Somerville because it is an immigrant city and a place where I feel immigrants can have a new chance, can build a new life, can have the kind of relationships with each other that are impossible in certain parts of the world. I'm not opposed to a ceasefire. I'm opposed to the city of Somerville making a decision that makes me feel very unwelcome and like this is not my home. I'm opposed not to a ceasefire, but to the fact that we are unable to acknowledge at all the effect of this war on Israeli civilians. I hear you speak again and again about the Israeli military. I don't have anything nice to say about the Israeli military, but I have a lot to say about the citizens of Israel. It's their home too. It's my home too. The reason I'm in Israel is because the United States wouldn't take my grandparents after the Holocaust. They did not want to go to Israel because they were great Zionists. No one else took them. So we both people live on the same piece of land, and we both say this land is ours. And until we are able to speak to each other and find a peaceful solution, this is just more tragedy and death. But here in Somerville is where I found a little bit of peace. It's where I had relationship with people who were from Palestine, and I was able to foster and nurture this relationship, and we were able to think together creatively and work towards peace in that region. And since October 7th, and since people started calling what Israel is doing in the territories genocide, I'm just experiencing hate from people who don't even know me. I just open my mouth, they hear my accent, they don't know my politics, they don't know anything. I've been thrown from places that used to be my go-to lunch places. In this town, the level of division that this is bringing about is just heartbreaking for me. And you are my representatives, and I elected you to take care of this local place that was a sanctuary. You say Somerville is a sanctuary city. Shouldn't it be a sanctuary for all the people who are living here? I'm not the only Israeli, by the way. What I really wished for is that this decision doesn't come before the board today at all because I feel we already lost, no matter what we vote for. We're already standing here in camps. We already lost friends. We already got to a place when we're not building something together. We've come to a place where we are hating on each other. And that is already a loss regardless of the outcome that we arrive at tonight. What I really was hoping is that the city of Somerville can use its energy, can use its energy and care for Israel and Gaza that is laudable and do something with the power that you have, the power of a local community to affect change in the life of people here. There are things you can do, other than symbolic things, that will bring us together rather than tear us apart. For example, you can call on President Biden to extend the temporary protected status at EPS for the refugees, the Palestinian refugees who are living here with the families right now, for the Israelis who are displaced and are living on their sister couch, like my sister and niece, and who cannot stay here and cannot work here and will be forced to go back to a war zone. You can do that for people who actually live here in Somerville and acknowledge that civilians on all sides are suffering, that civilians on all sides are displaced because of this and hurting because of this, and none of them should feel, none of them should feel like they're not cared for by the city that they live in. Thank you for listening to me.
Counselor Strezo would like to sponsor a speaker.
I'd like to sponsor Maria Axner.
Hello. You are my community. I'm with all of you. I've known many of you for a long, long time, and you're all in my heart. And I want to say I'm proud of my rabbi, who just spoke and spoke from her heart about what it's like for her. And I was glad to listen to all the Palestinians speak too. This is hard. This is really hard. You know, they've divided us in so many blanking ways. You know, the whole thing is a setup. And it's set up not by Jews and Palestinians, but by a lot of other power-hungry groups, you know? So my heart is broken as all of your hearts are broken. Here in Somerville, as a community, we have to figure out how to overcome our divisions so we can care about each one of us and take on the hard issues. And there will be more hard issues in the future that we need to face. I'm for a ceasefire on all sides, on all sides. I want everybody to stop fighting and killing each other. Every Israeli life and every Palestinian life, as Ben said, is totally precious and is a world, is a universe. So taking sides with only one or blaming one group will not bring peace. We need to understand that both peoples are precious, and if we blame or vilify Jews or Israelis for the policies of the Netanyahu government, that will not work. I want to say something about antisemitism. Antisemitism operates to divide progressive movements. The mechanism of antisemitism operates to blame Jews for all the big problems we have, scapegoating us for the hard things going on. We get blamed for capitalism. We get blamed for communism, whichever is convenient. Antisemitism is now happening because of this war, and it makes it all the more difficult to solve the problem. Okay, as I said before, there are many governments, in addition to the Netanyahu regime, that are responsible for what's going on. There's a long history of the British, the United States, Arab countries that have worked to divide Palestinians in Israel and divide Jews and Palestinians in Israel and Palestinian territories and beyond. I think it would be better if this resolution stated that Israel has a right to exist and the Palestinians also need a homeland. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
I'd like to sponsor Sam Gekter to speak.
Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak and for listening to what I have to say. I not only have a few minutes, but I need to spend a bit of it acknowledging how nervous I am to stand here. I know that standing here puts a target on my face. I know that someone will try to find out where I live and maybe tear down one of my signs or threaten my family with a Nazi-themed note, like happened to one of my friends, posted on their sign. If we look at the flyers that you all have been posting, "Somerville for Palestine", they instruct folks to wear masks when attending meetings and protests. I'm guessing it's not for COVID. I'm sure that some of you are also afraid of being targeted. But there's a way, there's also a way that one acts when they're less afraid of being held accountable for their words, free to speak, but also free to intimidate. We've seen that at rallies. We've seen that in attacks on Jewish students on our nearby campuses. I, like many of you, have a home here. My wife and I have rooted our family here. When this is all done, some of us will be left living here together in Somerville, seeing each other at future meetings, at block parties, at Porch Fest, or passing each other on the street when you're biking by. Some of us will know each other for the rest of our lives. Let's talk to each other here and outside with that in mind. Let's learn from each other here and outside this room with that in mind. Let's try to understand each other with that in mind. There's no way we can bring peace and reconciliation to a place 5,500 miles away if we can't do it with each other here. I am standing here tonight to ask you to vote no on this ceasefire resolution. I've shared some of this already with all of you in my email to you, my concerns with city councils taking up matters specifically against Israel more frequently than anything else, concerns with how this resolution was brought out, with the connections of some of those supporting this resolution, and about particulars about the language, the lack of the acknowledgement of hundreds of thousands of Israelis who are also displaced, the equating of hostages to convicted murderers as fair items to trade, and the lack of acknowledgement of Hamas's role in their commitment to the death of Palestinians and the destruction of Gaza as part of their strategy. But what I want to focus on here is how flawed it is to call for a ceasefire and the assertion that that is what's needed to return hostages and bring peace. There was a ceasefire on October 6th, the day before the attack. Hamas chose to violate a ceasefire to kill and rape and maim and burn people alive and take hostages and then kill hostages. Ben, in your thoughtful response to my email, you said that you and others believe that a ceasefire is the essential first step to allow for the return of all hostages. I don't follow this logic. If there was a ceasefire and Hamas chose to take hostages, how would another ceasefire bring their return? We have had many ceasefires in Gaza since Israel withdrew in 2005. Hamas took over in 2007 and started raining down rockets on Israel. By any measure you look at it, Palestinian suffering under Hamas government, the number of rockets fired at Israel in each major conflict, the number of dead in each major conflict. Things have gotten worse when stringing together one ceasefire after another, not better. Many have said that all Hamas has to do to win is to survive. They just need to make it through, and then they will have a few years' break to recruit more children in their terrorist summer camps, to build more tunnels and rockets, to raise more money for their war and plan their next attack. They have said this themselves. Quote, "The Al-Aqsa flood is just the first time, and there will be a second, a third, a fourth. We are willing to pay the price. We are a nation of martyrs." A call for an enduring ceasefire with a genocidal terrorist organization that has declared its intent to commit genocide and has shown its willingness to do it and has committed to doing it over and over is a naive fantasy. Time and again, history has shown us that when terrible people say they will do terrible things, we should take them at their word. A call for a ceasefire without calling for the removal of Hamas is the equivalent of giving up hope on a better life for Gazans. A call for a ceasefire without calling for the removal of Hamas is the equivalent of asking Israel to continue to allow their people to be murdered over and over again. A call for a ceasefire without a call for the removal of Hamas is a call for the slow-motion destruction of the Jewish state, which I know, which I know is actually the ultimate objective of some of the people calling for a ceasefire, the objective of those who subscribe to the settler colonialist narrative. Please, please don't buy into that. The Jewish connection to the land of Israel goes back 3,000 years. We have suffered wave after wave of invasion and persecution, from the Assyrians to the Babylonians, the Greeks, the Romans, the Caliphates, the Alibids, the Mamluks, the Ottomans, and the British. Throughout all of that, despite massive slaughters and expulsions, there was some small group of Jews there living in our homeland and some massive number of exiles yearning to return. The establishment of the modern state of Israel was an ingathering of those exiles, a return of an indigenous people to their ancient homeland. There was a beautiful post last night on Instagram. I won't say by whom because I haven't read all their posts, and I don't know if I agree with everything that they say, and I don't want to get called out for that. But the post reads, "Tonight is Tubishvat, the Jewish New Year for the trees, which, on record for over 1,800 years, is a holiday where Jews mark the earliest blooming trees in the land of Israel because that's the sort of thing indigenous people do when they're deeply tied to their land." A ceasefire without a call for the removal of Hamas is a way to keep around the organization most committed to erasing the Jewish connection to the land of Israel, then to erasing the Jewish state, and then to erasing the Jewish people themselves. A ceasefire without a call for the removal of Hamas is not the answer. Call on Hamas to stop operating in civilian clothing in the midst of mosques and hospitals. Call on Hamas to stop hiding weapons under children's beds and in their schools and in unraveled facilities. Hold them to the same standard that so many here are asking you to hold Israel to. Call for Arab nations to step in to help govern and rebuild Hamas. Call on Hamas to surrender. But please don't call for a ceasefire without that. Please vote no on this. Thank you.
Folks. Folks, excuse me. If this meeting is disrupted, you will have to exit. Excuse me. Thank you. It doesn't look like much in this room, but there's some expensive TV equipment, and we're going to ask you all to respect that and not lean on it, please. Please be careful around our TVs. Counselor Strezo would like to sponsor Hedy Stern to speak. Okay, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't start with whatever updates we're going to make to the Armory. I was really hoping to hear about that, so I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you for having me. I believe I'm the last one. Is that correct? Continue. Okay, I don't get to know. I believe I'm the last one, so I'm going to say some things. Okay, so my name is Hedy, and I'm also a Somerville resident. Like Jamal, I have three children. And like this young man over there whose name I don't remember and he wouldn't say, I do... What's your name, sir? You don't feel comfortable. Okay. I do believe that city council meetings really deeply matter. Like the other gentlemen, I am a descendant of Holocaust survivors also sent to Israel because they were not allowed in America. And beyond that, I also, I think a lot about... I don't know if you guys remember this early on, but there was, the first hostages released was from the Raanan family, and they were an American family from Chicago that was visiting their family. And I thought about them so closely because, first of all, my son's name is Raanan. We named him that. And second of all, because I visit Kibbutz Neir Oz every year, which is a kibbutz where on Simchat Torah, which is a celebration of the Jewish Torah, terrorists, Hamas terrorists, came in. They completely burned down houses. They shot. And I'm going to tell you just real quick. I go there because my cousins live there, and it's a husband and his wife and three kids. One is seven, nine, and 11. And the nine-year-old was at a sleepover at a friend's. So they're here as like these terrorists are just totally destroying their house, and they can't even get in touch with their son. They have no idea where he is. And I'm a religiously observant person, and so I had my phone off for the holiday of Simchat Torah, but obviously texted it and trying to get in touch to understand what is going on in Israel, this situation that we could have never imagined happening on October 7th, and the fear and terror. And I think about that, and they are displaced, like so many people we have talked about tonight, right? And I think there are so many incredible stories that we're hearing about tonight. And I loved what we heard from the rabbi about this community that really comes together. I think it's really interesting. We've had this whole conversation, but we haven't actually read the resolution text. I'm actually very surprised. I thought we were going to start with that. Ben started out by saying, "I thought about..." I talked to one person, and they said, "We cannot get this resolution text right." I still wouldn't vote for it, even if you changed the text. And so therefore, he's decided to make no changes to the text. But we're talking about like ceasefire, not ceasefire, et cetera. That's like a really big question, a really big concept. There are some major issues with the resolution in front of us as it's written today. And so it misquotes our members of Congress. It, again, like doesn't... Ben is trying to use the word ceasefire as like a way to think about all. But most resolutions are calling for things like disarmament of Hamas, return of hostages, without any preconditions. And one of the other shocking things about this resolution is it's very unclear about if it's calling for return of terrorists from Israeli jails or not. So it's really like, I read some of the languages of this resolution, and I was like, "Did Ben write this? Like, what is this?" Some of it is like so wild, some of the language there. And so I worked with him, because I've worked with Ben before a lot about the light situation at Conway Park. And so, you know, I worked with him a little bit, and I tried to send him some revival text, but he decided not to put it forth today. And so I want to say, I loved, again, Jamal, one thing you said is voting for a resolution like this is... I can't say Jamal, but I want to look at your face. Do you mind putting that sign down? Thank you. Jamal, one of the things you said was...
Stand up.
Oh, I'm funny, I guess. One of the things you said was, "This is about voting about like how Palestinian lives matter." But I think the way the resolution text that I read it today is so problematic because, well, I think it is really talking about Palestinian lives mattering. And by the way, they so, so do. It is also saying to Somerville residents that are Israeli or Jewish that it is okay if someone comes into your house and steals your children in their pajamas. It is okay if someone burns down your house. And so I want to take away the dichotomy of like ceasefire, not ceasefire, because as much as I wish we were solving that question in this room, we are not today. Today, we are voting on Ben's specific resolution, and that specific resolution is quite problematic. And so I think there's a variable of options in front of you today. You can say, "Yes, I want to vote for this resolution as it is written today because I believe in a ceasefire, and I don't care how many Jewish residents or Israeli residents I upset and offend and tell them their lives don't matter by voting for this resolution." Or you could write, you could say, "No, I am not voting for this resolution because this is an offensive resolution as written." And I want to offer an alternative, which is, I could also vote and say, "Not today." The resolution as written today is not doing what Ben hopes it will accomplish, which I genuinely believe he hopes, around bringing people together and making people feel welcome in Somerville. And so if you heard the testimony today and you feel the heat in this room, which is overwhelming, I wish I had worn something else, then you understand this is a contentious issue, and the resolution has not gotten to the point where it is as interesting as what updates we're making to the Armory, okay? Like, we are not at neutral yet. We could get there, and we could get there by just saying, "Not today, not this specific resolution." Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to counselors to speak. I'm going to go around first to those who haven't spoken yet. Counselor Burnley, if that's okay? You're going to call the question? Okay, Counselor Burnley. No.
No.
No. Through the chair, please. Counselor Burnley, are you calling the question?
Madam President, madam president, you said you were going to give folks an opportunity who haven't spoken yet. Counselor Burnley.
Counselor Burnley's spoken, so I know I'd like to speak. I imagine others would as well, so I'd—
I would like to do that, Counselor Davis, yes. Counselor Davis, do you want to start us off?
So, first of all, thank you, everyone who came here. It's—no matter what the issue is, it's always—it's always really great to see folks engaged in things. And you took your time out of the evening, and so I appreciate that. And I appreciate everyone who took time to reach out to us. This is far and away the record for the most emails, messages, voicemails, and every other type of message that I know I've received.
I'm just going to ask for silence to respect our counselors who are speaking.
I mean, some laughs when I say a little joke is okay. I digress. Look, this is a—this is a really, really terrible issue. It's a terrible situation. It's a terrible circumstances that exist in Gaza, in Israel, and in communities around the world, including this one, where people are really hurting because of the actions of some terrible people that have done terrible things. I spoke with President Euan Campin earlier this evening to first just express my deep respect and love and appreciation for him and for everything that he does as a city council. We've worked together on probably more things than any other council that I've worked with on various issues that affect this city over the years. And let me be clear. I—don't take anything I say as sort of indicating whether I'm voting yes or no for this or not, so let me just preface that. I absolutely want people to stop dying, full stop. The ongoing situation in Gaza is horrifying. The loss of life on October 7th is horrifying. The loss of innocent civilian lives everywhere around the world that happens every day is inexcusable, inhumane, and should be condemned. My personal views on the situation in Palestine are informed by many things, including the lived experience of dear friends who grew up there, one of whom's in the room this evening. But I know with certainty that neither I nor with all respect any of the members of this council have the necessary expertise to figure out a solution to the problem. And I recognize that—and I truly believe, as others have noted, that President Euan Campin's intent was not to solve this very, very old problem. But the challenge is that this was predictable. My—I am profoundly sad and profoundly disappointed that we are here right now, talking about this in this chamber, in this context. Because while it absolutely is an issue that impacts people throughout our community, and we've heard very eloquent statements from folks advocating for a yes vote, advocating for a no vote, for all sorts of nuanced reasons, this was inevitable, and this was predictable. And my belief is that by bringing this resolution, the only thing that has been accomplished is to further deepen division, to make people throughout the community feel less safe, feel less welcome. And for those who said that, you know, "Oh, this is symbolic, but it's okay for the city council to take up symbolic issues," you're right, we do that. But in addition to that pain that this introduction of this resolution has caused— and I don't think there's a good faith argument that I could be made—that the fact is, this has caused pain. I can't look at well over 1,000 emails and in any way conclude that the introduction of this resolution has not caused pain in this community. It has. And that should not have happened. There were other ways to do this, some of which I hope we'll still consider. One of the speakers tonight said that—and another speaker actually picked up on the same point that I—that struck me, but I think it's worth repeating, that, you know, a no vote would tell a large portion of the community that their lives don't matter. Unfortunately, it's clear to me from the communications that I've received that a yes vote will as well. So there's no good answer here. And I don't believe there is a good way forward with this resolution. As Rabbi Eliyahu said, "No matter which way we vote, we've already lost." And I think that's about the simplest and most accurate statement I've heard tonight. And we've lost primarily because of those actions of terrible people across an ocean, and not because of any action or lack of action or caring of anyone in this room or in this community. For those who know me, it's probably no surprise to hear that I tried to think about some amendments and some rewording, and—because words are what I do. And I took a number of suggestions from—and full disclosure, I did not read all 1,300 emails—well, beyond that at this point—that I received. But I tried to go through and pick as many as I could from different subjects and different parts of the day and try and get a sense. Some had some good suggestions. I'm pretty sure we heard a speaker or two tonight from some of the ones that I happened to see and read. I don't really want to introduce those resolutions, those amendments to the resolution, because as I said, I don't think there's a good way forward if we vote on this. If it's clear that a vote will happen, then to you, Madam President, or whomever is presiding at the moment, I would like to be recognized to suggest some resolutions. But throughout my consideration of this—oh, and—sorry. I forgot to put—the—I forgot the punchline of an earlier point I was making. It is a real impact on our ability to do the city's business. We have incredibly limited power. The city council isn't all that important. It's just not. I'd like it to be, we'd all like it to be, but the state makes sure that we have very little that we can actually do to change your lives, to make your lives better. But there are a few things, and one of those is through a tool called zoning. And Counselor McLaughlin and I had a meeting scheduled this evening on zoning reform that we've been working on for a while, although he tells me he has his own sort of approach to that that he wanted to make sure I heard about before I saw it otherwise, which means it's probably even a little more aggressive than the type of approaches we've talked about, but that's good. I can't wait to hear it. We canceled that, so we'll reschedule that another time. But this impacted our moving forward, that change. Zoning change—zoning is a tool through which we can address the single most important challenge that we have in this community, which is housing affordability. So that'll wait. That'll wait because we're here tonight. But we will get back to it. I would ask that the folks here in the room, the folks at the horseshoe, and particularly President Euan Campin, consider whether there's a way to move forward with this that doesn't include a yes or no vote tonight. I think the outpouring of communication, of emotion has been—certainly, I think a large part of the intent has been accomplished by making it clear that this is something that concerns this community. Even—the, you know, no one here—I don't think—I heard anyone here say that the ongoing death in Gaza is okay or justified. But if there's a way to bring folks together, to have a conversation, maybe about what an actual—the actual wording of a resolution might be. Maybe it's just about a general statement that we put out with the coordination of the administration. Maybe something completely different, I don't know. I was going to go through a whole bunch of things that I think and my views and things, but I'm not qualified for any of that, and I don't know if I'm right. And I know for sure that there are people in this room that are much smarter on all of the issues than I am, and—I maybe— fair enough. So maybe there's an opportunity to bring folks together and find something that we can agree is appropriate that can send the message to whomever will listen to it. And I don't actually think that a yes vote or a no vote will change one life in Palestine, in Israel. It will change lives here in Somerville. And so that's my request. I know there are other counselors who would like to speak. It just sucks that we have to consider whether to bring this, whether not to bring this, and it's just— It's— It's important to remember that civilians in Israel and civilians in Palestine are suffering because of the terrible acts of terrible people. And beyond that, I don't think there's anything we can do about it directly as a city council.
Please respect our counselors as they're speaking.
Because our vote isn't going to change. The United States government is currently working towards a ceasefire. We have a special envoy who was in Cairo, who is now in Qatar. Our federal delegation has spoken out in favor of this. I don't think we're going to change any minds. It'd be great if we did, with whatever we come up with, but to me, this isn't the right approach right now. And so I'd ask that we delay a vote and look for a language that doesn't have the effect of dividing the community as this language clearly unequivocally has. Thank you.
Excuse me. I'm asking for respect of our counselors as we're speaking and deliberating. Other counselors. Counselors—
You know what, go for it. Nope, nope, you first. Nobody.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. So I don't want to speak at all, to be honest, but it's because I have too much to say. And I know that the more I say, the more one side or the other will get upset. So I'm going to try to just speak from the heart, talk about how I feel about this. And I do—I want to appreciate everybody who came here today. I'll tell you right now, like, my mother offered to pick me up after this because she was afraid for me. And I am a combat veteran. I'm a white man. I'm not Muslim, I'm not Jewish, and I was afraid to come up here today. And I appreciate all of you. I can feel the tension bubbling over, but I also feel the restraint. So I appreciate everybody being restrained with your passions. And it's a tough thing for me, even for me, to think about what's happening in the world, not just in Israel and Palestine, the Ukraine, conflicts around the world. As someone who's seen it myself, it's very hard for me to even—to even discuss. Excuse me. I just—I want to thank, first of all, you know, I see people in the room on both sides that I know and love. Jamal, I love you. I've known you for many years. You are my constituent, I respect you. And it hurts me to know what you're going through. Myra, you've been a mentor of mine for many years, and it hurts me, and it hurts the rabbi to see everyone suffering over this, over this conflict. And Ben is one of the people I respect most on this board. Counselor Panetta Neufeld is also someone I respect very much on this board. And people are passionately disagreeing on this issue. And it's hard to see, but I do feel like we are— and I also seen this unfold in other cities, and I think it's been tragic to see the direction is gone. And I'm hoping we get through tonight without going in that direction. Right now, I feel pretty good about it. Just to tell people, you know, how I feel, so. So a lot of people know me, not everyone knows me. You know, I don't need to be told about what's going on over there because I've seen it firsthand. I've seen women and children killed in front of me by people who were utterly convinced that they were doing the right thing, that God was on their side, and that—they were just convinced of that. I've lost friends to terrorism at home and abroad. And so it's not something that's lost on me. And one of the things I just want to say is, I hope, no matter what happens, that what happens is—I think a lot of the worst crimes in the world are not made by mustache, twirling villains who are just bent on destruction. It's often made by people who are so convinced they're doing the right thing that they're driven to violence, and they're driven to eliminate the other side and to stop people from speaking and from not communicating anymore. And that was my fear for tonight, and it's my fear in general to see a lot of suffering and the anger that that builds up inside. So I just want people to know that, you know, I—no matter what I say, I'm not closing my eyes to people suffering, because even if I close my eyes, I see that. I still see what I saw and experienced, what I did. And it's relative to all suffering of all people everywhere. So that's just my compassionate statement to people that I want you to know, that I'm not ignoring anything. And I'm so—I really have such a hard time digging into this conflict because I actually do—I have a breadth of knowledge about it. I've read it, I've studied it, I understand. And it's hard for me to even express it because I just feel it's so complicated and so beyond my scope of understanding of what has to happen to end this war and to end this conflict. And if people want me to give a political statement about how I feel what should happen, I would just point to Bernie Sanders, who's the person that I respect the most in this—not in general, but, you know, in this conflict in particular. A guy who's been fighting for the rights of Palestinian people longer than most of us have been alive, and before it became such a passionate subject in America, back when it wasn't even considered a left-wing issue, when he was talking about these issues. And I listened to what he has to say, and I listened to my senators as well, Elizabeth Warren, Ed Markey. And I feel like they're saying what I feel in my heart. And they're saying that they want an end to violence, that they want humanitarian aid, that they want to negotiate a peace. And I see, when I go online, people rejecting that and saying, "No, you need to say these words." And Bernie Sanders, "Your position isn't strong enough anymore." Elizabeth Warren, "Your position isn't strong enough anymore." And it's not because of anything in their hearts or because of any effort they're making. It's because they're not using a specific language. And I do think, you know, we get caught up—movements in general get caught up in catchphrases and language, and it's easier—it makes it easy for people to understand. And I'll tell you, I've talked to people in Ward 1. Thousands of people have contacted me. I've tried to make an effort. Anyone who said they live in my neighborhood, I've called them back, regardless of where they stand on this position. I've given them my position, and I've been generally understood. And one thing that rang out to me, a woman told me, after she said, "I appreciate what you're saying. I just want an end to the violence. I want something to be done about it. I don't know what to do." And I told her I understand that, because when I came back from war, I felt incredibly small and felt like I was just an ant in a world of suffering. And what do I do? And I came home, and I said, "I'm going to serve my community, and I'm going to focus on the people I see in front of me, the world around me, the suffering I've seen in my community. I've lost friends to substance abuse, violence. The people I know who grew up in the city, who ended up surviving, don't live in the city anymore because they can't afford to live here." And I said, "I'm going to come home, I'm going to focus on substance abuse, affordable housing, local jobs. These are the things that drive me every day." And I do, I have a tunnel vision, I have a laser focus on these issues, because it is painful for me to even talk about these things. So going off on a side, I think, I think, as one of the speakers pointed out, is, tonight we are talking about a specific resolution introduced by someone that I respect immensely, who is not using the words that I would use, even though I do agree with a great many things he's saying. But I note that Elizabeth Warren's quoted in this, Ed Markey's quoted in this, the United Nations is quoted in this. And then the resolution says to tell them to say things that they're not saying. And that's what I have a hard time with, because I feel like it's so complicated, and I feel like these senators that I respect have a great grasp of U.S. foreign policy, of international relations, of what's going on in the Middle East, and I feel like they are fighting for that. And I feel like they're getting shouted down and saying, it's not enough, you have to say this word. And it doesn't come down to words to me. If, tonight we were saying that we want a resolution to support peace in the Middle East, to bring people to the table, to negotiate peace, I would say, I have no problem with that. But then you say ceasefire, and then they don't want to say that, and it becomes, you have to say ceasefire, then they call for a ceasefire, and now we need an enduring ceasefire. And the words of Bernie Sanders ring in my head, the man who has fought for this issue for a long time, who said, I don't know if Hamas is capable of having a ceasefire. And there's been many, and I'm not saying anything for applause or for booze, I'm just saying, like, what I'm seeing and seeing how complex it is, and just wondering, like, not only what is my place in this, but what is my place in telling my senators to use my language, when I believe that they are speaking their truth, and I think they're searching for peace. So I'll end it there. It's just hard for me to get behind the resolution because of everything that's said, because of the division I feel, which is, I don't feel was intentional at all. I feel like Counselor Youn Campbell cares passionately about this, as does everyone in this room. I have a hard time getting behind specific language. I've talked to him about that, said, could we say this instead? He did introduce this, because it's his word, and his word matters to him. My word and my words matter to me as well. So as it is, I can't get behind it for that reason. And it's because, not because I am choosing one side over the other, it's because I feel like I'm being compelled to pick a side, and I don't want to pick a side. I want peace, and I want to focus on the people living under Highway 993 in Somerville, people suffering from air pollution, the people who can't afford to live in the city. And it has been hard this week, I'll say, it's been very hard this week to focus on those issues. So that's where I'm at. And before I say anything worse, I'll stop. So, but thank you, everyone, for coming, and I hope everyone leaves tonight feeling good. I'm not sure if that's going to happen, but we'll see. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor, Counsel Strezo.
I'll go next. I want to thank you all for coming tonight and for sharing your stories. Thank you. Thank you. I can tell you care passionately about this. And this is our Somerville community, us as a community, all of us. We work together as a community. And one thing I love about these in-person meetings is that we're not demonizing each other on the interwebs. We have this chance to look into each other's eyes and see the humanity in each other, because this is our community, this is some of our community, the ones who had the ability to get here tonight, who had the privilege to make time to come tonight. All of us as a community. And I am a Jewish woman, and I'm proud of that. And I was, and of course, I am for an enduring ceasefire, because what's, what's happening is atrocious and upsetting. And it makes me sick, and I pray often, I pray often for Palestinians and Israelis, and I pray for an immediate end to the war and the trauma. And we can agree to announce, denounce the civilian casualties and displacement in this war as well. We can agree to denounce the brutality of October 7th. And we can demand that Palestinians have a better life. You are my community members, and I work hard for you, and I always will, I always will. Because it's, it's my act of love, our community. And one of my concerns with this resolution was the divisiveness it could potentially And it bothers me. And I have heard repeatedly from a lot of you, and I love hearing from you, it brings me joy. I love these conversations we have, because I want to know, I want to know that you are more than just, I mean, I know this, that you are more just, than just a name on the screen. You are a person with hopes and dreams and loves, just like me. And I get a lot of calls from my constituents telling me how scared they feel, and a lot in the Jewish community, feeling how scared they feel about this. And when I said that, you found a reason to put up signs as if I don't agree with you. But we are all on the same thing. And we need to build bridges and not divisions. And I'll tell you about some of the experiences and calls I've received as well, if everyone else has been answering their calls, about how unsafe Jews feel now. About how they're worried about their spouses or their children, how it has made them feel in our Jewish community, that neighbors are once again ignoring the humanity of our local community. I hear that sentiment many, many times over the past weeks and months. Some residents have told me that the resolution makes them feel that they're second guessing the decades-long relationships some have built in this community. We have to work through all of this pain together, together. I hear some of you refusing to clap when someone says something that you don't hear, want to say. But this person spoke from their heart, and yeah, okay, I've been in affordable housing, like hearings, and I've, I've heard things that maybe I didn't want to hear, and I was like, but you know what? It still takes guts to do it. And they're still your community members, and they want peace too. And I hear about constituents who put up signs in their yards and them being ripped down and threats being placed on them. And then I hear of Islamic-phobic graffiti happening. And my first call after I heard that, and I want to talk about this, because this is one of my focuses, because this is Somerville, and this is our community. And my goal is to make sure you feel safe here. My first couple of calls and emails was to make sure that the city departments were talking to each other, connecting with each other. So whoever saw that, because it was unacceptable, that the city departments are communicating with each other, so that we can stop the hate speech and any kind of graffiti, because that doesn't, if we don't, if we aren't having the conversations and uniting, then we are, we are not reporting a lot of pain, and we're not acknowledging it, and we're not responding to it. And that's not okay, because we have to work together. And I want to say that it's okay to have different opinions about how we get to peace. It's okay. It's so good to see you. I've been looking for a purple hat like that. It's okay. We have to be brave and speak our minds and listen to each other and respect each other. Thank you. Thank you. I've worked extensively throughout my tenure to stop hate speech, misogyny, homophobia, antisemitism, and Islamophobia, and I will continue to. So my question is, to all of you, how can you get out of that? How can you talk to somebody that may not be an easy answer to yes, and have those heart-to-heart conversations and have the uncomfortable spaces off, off the internet, off the internet? Because this, this eye-to-eye contact, connection is where it is. This is it. I'd love to talk. Watch, watch the flagpole, don't drop that. Even though, I really, really, I want to mention that I'm not crazy about the curtains here, so if you accidentally ruin the curtains, it'll force us to be able to get some new and put some in the budget next year. There's a lot of pain in this room, and there's a lot of pain that are carrying over from experiences. I'm with you. I'm with you to help, work together as a community to heal this pain. And I want to know how we can, all of us, work together. That will continue. And I'm hoping through what we take back tonight, all of us in this experience, that we really can make some new friends and some new connections in our community. Because then we learn and we grow. I believe in us. And you know what? Yeah, I've been thinking about this all week. And to Counselor McLaughlin's point, a lot of my international experience, I'm no international policy expert, a lot of my international experiences is trying to prevent global housing companies from scarfing up our homes and kicking people out of their rental properties and displacing us. So I have trouble with the division of this, and I wish that, I wish that we had, had a chance to really incorporate all of this. And if we're dividing each other, then we aren't working together as a community, and we have to work together as a community. Can't just check a box and get brownie points. It's the real work that we have to do together. And so many residents tell me they don't feel safe if we're not all talking. So this resolution needs some work, and we need to expand and make sure that all of our voices, and all of us are working for peace and making sure that healing is happening. Thank you.
Counselor Youn Campbell?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to make sure that, you know, if councillors wish to speak before me, that obviously I'll yield, but I have some thoughts on how to proceed.
Any other councillors who wish to speak?
I'll speak.
Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I want to thank everybody in here, and I want to acknowledge the, the pain and suffering of, of the people in Palestine and Israel. And, you know, I, I tend to, I am one of the folks that, you know, this is what I'm going to say. I'm going to keep it short. I'm basically, it's one of those situations where, like, I have, kind of like with Counselor McLaughlin, that I have so much to say that it just kind of implodes in my brain, to where, like, I've literally been, been, you know, thinking about this and eating, sleeping, breathing this for the past, you know, four or five days. And it's not so much the struggle as to vote yes or no, as much as it's to vote at all. You know, I, I don't like being sort of pushed into a corner to where I have to take a side, and it's been made clear to me, even by colleagues, that, you know, we're being forced to choose a side. One, one side or the other is going to be a side. And so, you know, if we can't figure out a way to, to change this resolution to something that the community can agree on, it is my intention to leave the chamber when it comes to the vote, and I will abstain from voting. Thank you.
Other councillors? Counselor Wilson?
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I want to thank everyone who showed up tonight and who called, texted, sent the over 1,500 emails about this in the past week that we received. Those emails range from strongly supporting or opposing the resolution, suggesting tweaks to the language, to questioning why we are taking this up as an issue at all in the first place, as a city council here in Somerville. As far as that last one, I don't necessarily disagree. Like Counselor Davis, taking this up tonight meant that something local I'd been working on is going to have to wait. It was my personal disillusionment with global, national, and state politics that caused me to turn my attention to local politics a number of years back. And this interest in local issues is really why I ran for office for the first time in 2021, and my focus in office has pretty much been hyper-local during my time on this council. But our colleague from Ward 3 was led by his conscience to introduce this resolution, so here we are, and our rules say an up-down vote is required. We need to vote yes or no on this. Talking points and framing aside, when you look at what this resolution calls for, the resolved items in there, there are four things. A ceasefire to allow humanitarian aid to Gaza and the release of hostages, urging the Biden administration to work toward this, and then sending a copy of the resolution to federal, the federal delegation, the president, and then condemning antisemitic, anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab, Islamophobic, and all xenophobic rhetoric and attacks. And this is the local angle for me. I've heard awful stories from constituents with wildly different views on this resolution who've experienced all of those types of hate. And that's what I'm going to be choosing to focus on here. So really, two basic asks. Ceasefire over there, condemning hate here. Now, we can quibble about wording, and look, if folks have strong feelings about wordsmith in this and arriving at verbiage that's agreeable to everyone, fine. But my focus is on the anti-war and anti-hate aspects of this resolution, and that's why I'm supporting this tonight. Given a choice, I will vote.
Please.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
I'm asking us to allow our councillors to speak.
Thank you, Madam President. Given a choice, I'll vote for peace and against hate every single time, so I'm a yes on this. I've had some lengthy conversations with friends on both sides of this in recent days. I know emotions are high, we all knew that, it hasn't disappointed here tonight. I know my yes vote is going to disappoint some of you. But I'm voting yes, wanting to make sure here, with these words, that you know why I'm doing that. Thanks.
I'm asking for respect and silence, so that councillors may deliberate and vote. If this chamber cannot maintain silence, I will clear this chamber for the rest of this meeting. Counselor Scott would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're just going to turn your volume up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the sincerity of many of my colleagues tonight, and of course, for everybody who spoke from the public. for everybody who spoke from the public. Similar to several of my colleagues, there is so much to say on this that it can't all be said tonight. These are conversations that have been happening for years as we've sat with friends, family, and neighbors and wrestled with these difficult questions. And for nearly four months, those conversations have become even harder, even more anguished as the process, prospect of a peace that we all want feels like it's getting impossibly farther away. I I congratulate my colleague from Ward Three who has been wrestling with this in that way, who put in the work to find his words for this. Over the course of decades, colleagues, past and current, have brought international issues to our attention as a city council and asked for, supported their colleagues for their words, whether that was in July of 2017, fighting for TPS status for immigrants from El Salvador, Haiti, Honduras, or in June of 2018, one of our colleagues brought the horrific violence in Cameroon to this floor, where the government was burning villages and displacing 160,000 people. I had a 42 deportations, called to prevent nuclear war October 2018. So this is, I believe, a reasonable thing to be brought, to be considered, and mostly I am grateful for the courage and heart that it took for our colleague to bring this before us and for everybody to engage in this conversation. So thank you. You know, a colleague mentioned it's hard to direct representatives to use the words that we want. It's important for them to use the words that are in their hearts. I think that's happened here. And more than any solution I might have or idea of how to solve it, I'm most interested in hearing the words of my colleague, whose words these are we are discussing. So I appreciate a few moments just to, just to offer that heartfelt thanks, and I'm eager to hear from my colleague from Ward Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Mbak?
Thank you, Madam President. It's been a rough week for me, hearing everyone here, you know, talking. I really want to thank everybody that came to speak. It's really, this is a touchy issue. I can see my neighbor here, this is Ridge, Elena. This is, you know, I see friends that I all know, I know Jamar, I know Sarah, I know, it's, it's, and I've communicated with almost everybody, you know, to the best of my ability. Especially as someone from a war-torn zone myself, I can empathize with everyone involved. You know? I'm just here, before even coming here, I just kind of made, I was just conflicted, but coming down today, I decided that I'm going to be supporting this resolution. And this is simply because, you know, this resolution focuses on the sanctity of human life and recognizes the suffering of Israelis and Palestinians. And I'm all too familiar with ethnic and religious division from the country where I come from and the terrible harm they cause. Of course, like I mentioned, this is very complex. It's a complex issue with so much pain and suffering, but I believe in a ceasefire, and with my conviction, I'm here to support the resolution. Thank you.
Counselor Yuen Kempin, I know you want to speak. I would like for the crowd to continue to respect the counselors, and if not, I will clear the chamber, I will take a recess.
Thank you, Madam President. Everybody hear that? Quiet. Thank you. I'm going to try to be brief here. It, it is my desire that we vote on this tonight. That, that is what I would like to have happen. Obviously, I respect the majority will of this council. If, I'm not going to put in that motion, if someone wants to put in a motion to table this to work on language and a majority vote, I will not personally support that. If a majority supports that, of course, I will respect that. It, it is my belief, and I just, I want to, through you, Madam President, I want to respond to the, I think, completely good-faith questions of why this language, right? Why, why did I use my own language? And I just, this is, I just want to tell you the truth about why it's my language. Because it's been over 110 days, and the city has not said anything. And this is not an accusation at all. It is because it's really, really hard to talk about this. I know that because I also waited 110 days to say anything, and I tried to find words and failed over and over and over. And I, I know, as so many of my colleagues have said, as soon as you start trying to put this into words, you realize how hard it is. And again, this is not a criticism whatsoever. I reached out to a number of counselors and asked if they were interested, and folks very understandably thought this is not what I want to do, and I respect that. And this is, I'm not criticizing, I'm saying the fact of why it wound up coming from me. And I will also just say honestly, because I did know that this would be difficult and painful, I, I wanted to take responsibility for that. You know, just, just honestly to my colleagues, I want you to know that, like, I, I knew, I didn't know exactly what was going to happen, but I knew that it would be very, very difficult, and I didn't want to make someone who didn't want to feel that way responsible for that. That, that's why it's this language. I did my absolute best, and I recognize there is no way to do this right. I, I want to try to be clear, there was a lot of folks who reached out to me disappointed that the resolution didn't go further in its criticism of Israel. And I think they made a lot of points that I very strongly agree with, which I decided not to include because I wanted to find something that I felt like more people could agree with. Since the language went public, I'd say there are three particular pushbacks that I have gotten, in particular from the local Israeli-American community. And these are things that I personally believe are captured in the resolution, but I have been told or not. And so, you know, if, if it is the honest intention of folks, I'm going to say what they are in a second, if folks think that what I'm about to propose makes a difference for anyone who's on the fence, great, let's do that tonight. They're very simple. If folks just think like, all right, we're wordsmithing, this is a waste of time, tell me and I'll stop. The three things that I have heard, I put the word detainees. I said, I want the release of all hostages, political prisoners and detainees. And a lot of people asked me, was I referring to the perpetrators of the massacre on October 7th as detainees? No, is the answer. My intention is no. I am not referring to the release of the people who perpetrated the worst mass murder of my own ethnic group. I would like to state that clearly for the record. I am referring to the widely documented and reported mass detention. This was in the New York Times two days ago. I'm not expecting that everyone has read this stuff, but this is not, I'm not making this stuff up. Major international groups are accusing this detention process of looking like torture. That's what I'm talking about. That is the intention. That all said, if, if this is, and I understand why it could easily be misinterpreted, if it makes enough difference to counselors around this horseshoe to take that word out, without question, I would do that in a heartbeat. That does not change the strength of the resolution at all to me. Secondly, people have reached out and said, in the list of forms of hatred that we're condemning, why is anti-Israeli hatred not included? I would have no problem including that. If there is anyone who thinks that because of what the Netanyahu regime is doing, that an eight-year-old in Somerville with an Israeli flag on their backpack should be harassed, you are not a friend of mine, and this resolution is not for you. So let me be really clear about that. If folks want to include that, of course, I would do that in a heartbeat. There's, that is absolutely, that is intended to be included, and if that language matters, I will do that tonight, without question. Lastly, there's a question, why doesn't it specifically condemn the Hamas attacks? I, I believe it does. It refers to them as horrific in the second line of the resolution. If it matters, I mean, without question, I condemn these attacks. End of sentence. If, if it means something to put in this resolution, whereas this council condemns the horrific Hamas attacks of October 7th, that is not an issue with me. I will put that in absolutely. That was my intention from the get-go. Those are three things that I have heard from members of the community that I totally agree with. It was my intention already, but I, I have heard that that is not reflected. I have also heard, I will just say, and the reason I didn't wind up going through is because everyone has told me, I still don't support it. These are things that anger me about it, but it's not like I'm happy if those go in. I'm just being honest with you that that is why I left with, with my intentions. So, you know, I guess I'd want to hear, I think, through the, through the President, from you, Counselor Davis, who had talked about, you know, specific amendments, if those are things that would change the way that you feel about this, tell me now. If just the fact of this resolution is too painful, I respect that 100%. I will look at none of my colleagues any different, no matter what happens tonight. I'm through, Madam President.
Other colleagues? Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, thank you, Counselor Yuen Kempin. So I I still feel strongly that the way we do business in this body is through committees, particularly when there's complicated issues. It's how we've always done it. It's been the request of you as President and of recent previous Presidents. What you're asking the council to do tonight is contrary to that. It's a fact. And it's clear to me that I won't be a popular person in this room if I move to table this item so that we can have a careful conversation about words in a resolution that we could move forward with. I'm disappointed that you led by saying you want a vote tonight. I had hoped that you would have heard the argument, recognized the precedent and the way that we do business, and been willing to move forward with that. So through the President, I ask you to reconsider that. I ask you to, and I ask this without in any way diminishing the importance of the issue, I also want to vote yes on something that supports a peace in any region and condemns any act of hatred in this city. I can't in good conscience, given all of what we've heard, vote I can't in good conscience not try everything I, I have, use every tool I have in my ability to address some of the specific concerns that were raised. I don't think if we do that here tonight, it will be we'll get it right. Just don't think we will. We may not get it right, even if we spend another week or year or decade on it, but so through the President, I ask that again of you. And if you're not willing to take that approach, then, Madam President, I would like to come back with some proposed language changes.
Counselor Yuen Kempin, would you like to respond?
Through you, Madam President. It is difficult for me to disagree with a colleague that I respect so greatly, but I, I want to do this. You know, I, I just, I feel extremely strongly about this. This is my personal conviction. If, if a recess is in order and we can talk, I will absolutely do that. It's hot, it's late, I get that. This is very important to me.
Counselors, we can lay this on the table while you both deliberate, and we can move on with the meeting. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
That's going to take us back to item 1.2, which is remembrances.
Oh, does anyone have any remembrances tonight? Any moments of silence? Okay?
Item 1.3 is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 14th, 2023.
Any discussion? At items approved, next item.
Item 4.1 is in order by Counselor Strezzo, that the Director of Parks and Recreation discuss how inclusive playground accessibility is being considered in future playground plans and redesign projects.
Counselor Strezzo, I do ask again for quiet in the chambers. If you would like to discuss anything, please step outside. Counselor Strezzo?
Madam President, can you please send this to Housing and Community Development?
Madam President.
Counselor Wilson would like to sign on, and Counselor McLaughlin would like to make a comment.
Well, I apologize. I probably feel like I'm not the only one that thinks this is incredibly awkward to start going through these items, like, why we're discussing a world affair? Can we take a recess and just come back to this?
Yes, so let's send that to Housing and Community Development, and let's take a 10-minute recess. 10-minute recess.
All right.
I'm really appreciative of your participation. I know this is bad. We're considering the press conference. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm getting to a point where I'm, um, I don't know, I'm a lot more of a home. I'd be going, you're ready for me tomorrow. I'm really, 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 I'm really,[548.87]
Why are we wearing flares over here? We are maniacs.
Because I am cool as a cucumber no matter what the situation, my friends. You know, I used to, but like ever since I hit probably forty-five or so, I just get, I just get cold all the time. It's, it's crazy.
I hear that happens. Usually it's like seniors who get cold, right?
I'm like, my, my circulation is going, I seriously, like I, I, last year I bought like a cardigan thinking it was like, oh, cardigans, they're cool again. No, no, no. It's like a full-on grandpa cardigan with like the little pockets right here gray like with all the like, you know, the cable knit, like, it's awful. But it's so warm. I wear it all the time in the house.
Is it in the pocket for the sunglasses to go with?
It does not. That's one of the main, so it's got the pockets here, but there's not other reading power. It's like, but Amy's just like, seriously? Like, it's warm. It's so warm. I know it's terrible, but it's so warm.
I think everyone has that same feeling.
Colleagues, we're going to get started.
A week ago yesterday, I guess till we're in the eventuary, I'm just like... And I'm, I feel like I'm fine about it.
Colleagues, we are getting started. Please take your seats.
Really not, okay.
Because we have a remote member. Madam Clerk, will you take roll call to establish quorum, please?
This is roll call. Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Said.
Present.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Here.
Counselor Panada Neufeld.
Here.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Here.
With all counselors present, we have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. Counselor Ewan Campin.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you all for your patience. Um, the draft of the resolution that I put forward was the best that I could come up with. It is incredibly important to me that this has as much support as possible coming from this city council. This is a legislative body and we do things collaboratively. Um, we listen to one another and the language that I come up with, uh, may not be reflective of exactly what everyone else wants to see. Some people might be altogether opposed. Some people, there really are changes that they want to see. So, um, I've drafted some um amendments that I'm now gonna read and I'm gonna ask the, the clerk to put on the screen. Um, I do not believe that these um change the intent of this resolution from my perspective, but they do bring in um important feedback from colleagues whose opinions I really respect on behalf of their constituents. The whereas clauses do not change. Um, I'm gonna just read the "Now be it therefore resolved that the Somerville City Council affirms the right of all Palestinian civilians and Israeli civilians to live in peace, and be it resolved that the Somerville City Council supports an enduring ceasefire and/or any means to support long-lasting peace, the provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza, and the release of all hostages, and be it resolved that the Somerville City Council recognizes Israel's right to defend itself within the bounds of international law, and condemns the terrorist attacks by Hamas on October 7th, and further resolved that the Somerville City Council condemns anti-Semitic, anti-Palestinian, anti-Israeli, anti-Arab, anti-Islamophobic, and all xenophobic rhetoric and attacks, and be it further resolved that the Somerville City Council urges the Biden Administration, Senate, and Congress to work towards an enduring ceasefire, humanitarian aid, and the release of all hostages, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to each member of our federal delegation and to President Biden urging them to use their position to enact a sustained ceasefire." And I would ask, uh, that once colleagues have weighed in, that we vote, please.
Counselor Strezzo then Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I also have one edit that constituents have brought forward to me. Uh, that would say demand a dismantling of Hamas as part of a ceasefire and for lasting peace.
Um, I'd like to move on the amendments that I just proposed and a roll call on those amendments to this. Of course, further motions are in order.
Okay. Counselor Burnley and then Counselor Mbah.
Through the chair, mine is just a point of clarification. The screen says anti-Israel, not anti-Israeli, I think. Um...
As you may know, we came up with this quickly.
Yes.
It should be anti-Israeli, will the clerk agree?
I just wanna, I just wanna make, be very clear about that. Then, uh, is it possible for the and/or to just be and? Uh, the or of like, enduring ceasefire or any means to support long-lasting peace, uh, seems a bit odd to me. It feels like these two should go hand in hand. Uh, I don't know if that's like a lawyerly distinction or something, but...
Um, Madam President, the, the language that I submitted is my language, right? That, that's what I would have asked to vote. I, I'm trying to get us to a place where as much of the council can support this, you know, either with reservations or enthusiastically. So, this is the language I'm proposing. I, I understand. I, I hope that doesn't lose us any votes. Um, but that, that's the...
Okay. Counselor Mbah?
Oh, no. Thank you, Madam President. I think Counselor Burnley mentioned what I wanted to say about the anti-Israeli instead of anti-Israel. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, and thank you to Counselor Ewan Campin for um entertaining some suggestions and, and doing the, uh, actually having your laptop connected to the wifi so you could actually make the changes. Um... As I said earlier, no matter what we vote on tonight, I, I, I know that there will be, be people in the community that are hurt. And I, I see that and I recognize that and I acknowledge that. Um, I drafted most of these changes. Um, they're not all from me specifically. Um... And actually what we see here is a, is a result of some discussion with Counselor Ewan Campin, um, and some, some tweaking of language. Um, but these were based on communications that, that I received from folks that we all, you know, saw, some of which we heard tonight. There was a whole, there, there were a number of other things that I have, in various, folks behind me have been watching me sort of work live here, writing things, erasing them, deleting them, changing them, grouping them together, thinking about the sequencing to, you know, I recognize that, as I said, this isn't, certainly not perfect. Um, it's still not even really what I think I'd probably like to see, but I, I feel that this at least acknowledges and addresses some of the primary legitimate concerns with the language that were raised in a way that to me is meaningful from a language standpoint. I hope that folks in the community will agree. I hope that folks in the community will understand that the intent of this council, and I, I, I believe the intent of pretty much everybody here, if not in fact everybody here, is that we move forward as a community wanting to stop people from dying. Wanting, wanting the death to stop, wanting peace. How we get there is incredibly complicated and it's not for us to decide the exact words or the exact approach, but this is, I, I hope folks will see this as a genuine effort to try and take and address some of the challenging language. Um, I hope folks won't take this entire process, as many clearly have, as being an indication of there being one side or the other within this community. I want there to be peace. I want people to stop dying. I don't think it's a, it's the optimal use of this council's time to try and come up with words to say that, but since we have, these are words that I can support. And, and so I, I appreciate Counselor Ewan Campin's willingness to, uh, to agree to some changes. Thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I requested the word or any methods of peace to add, get to this, so that I can vote for peace, because that's what I want. And regardless of what you want to call it, that's what I want and that's what everyone in the room wants on either side of this issue. And to wordsmith the word "or" just tells me that the magic word is the most important part to this resolution. And I'm not here to say the magic word. I'm here for peace. I'm here for people to stop fighting. So, I support Counselor Ewan Campin's resolution in the hopes for peace, in the hopes of getting to something that recognizes everybody in this room.
And any other counselors who wish to speak?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Sorry, on my amendment.
Right. Your amendment.
Okay. So, we will have a second after that one.
Okay. Do you want to speak on this amendment?
Uh, no, I will talk with an additional...
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, um, I want to thank the Council President um for just being such a, a statesman and a polit, and a, a great politician and, and somebody who's willing to compromise and to listen, um, to achieve the same goal, which is peace, as Counselor McLaughlin said. You know, I don't know that this will have the intended effect that we all think it will on, uh, you know, the, the people who have the power to do something. Um, cynically, I tend to think not, but, um, but if, if it can, if it, if this helps and if, if we're all in agreement, um, then I, I think this is a great effort and I support the changes and I will support the resolution. Thank you.
Other counselors? Okay.
Move the question.
Okay. We move to question.
So, this will be...
Move on the amendment, right?
This will be on the amendments, yes.
On these amended language.
The resolution is not yet before the council. This is on the amendments that you see on your screen. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Panada Neufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, the motion is approved and those amendments have now been accepted as part of the resolution.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I am proposing another amendment to this, which I will support as, uh, I think it will help, that a demand of dismantling of Hamas as part of a ceasefire and for a lasting peace.
Uh, Counselor Ewan Campin.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, through you, I, I appreciate the, the sentiment here. I, I do not support this amendment, um, and I want to explain extremely clearly why. Um, it is not because I am a supporter of Hamas, if anyone's taping this. Um, there's two things here. There is an order of operations. I want the war to end. I want a ceasefire, and then I want an international peace process to start. That's, that's what I want. If you read the New York Times' article today on our CIA envoy that is there trying to negotiate a ceasefire right now, the general sentiment is that Hamas has to go and the Netanyahu regime has to go. They both gotta go, right? That's the general sentiment. I think, it is my feeling that this will, I, what I want is an end to the war. And so, I, I want to, that, that's why I'm opposed to this particular amendment. And I, I don't want to cut people off, but I, I don't want to open up a whole can of worms discussing this. I'd prefer that we vote on it and then move on.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Strezzo.
Then I am fine to amend that to say, uh, a demand of dismantling of Hamas as part of a ceasefire and for lasting peace, and a dismantling of the Netanyahu administration. How do we feel about that?
Madam President, I, I, again, I thank you. Um, I, it is my preference to keep the resolution as, as we have it, and that, that's why I'm voting against it. Thank you.
Okay. We have to keep, keep the chambers quiet. Counselor Strezzo?
Madam President, this was written by fellow Jews who felt like that, that want to work together for the solution of peace and a collaboration of this. And this is one way that I feel and they feel that we can get there. And I think it would help for collaboration and would get me to vote in support of this resolution because it has been clear that it helps with the feeling of isolation that some Jews feel in this process. So, I am asking my colleague to, uh, to do that, or I can create other suggestions of amendments right here as well, too.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, um, I appreciate what the good counselor at large is trying to do here, um, in, in, you know, negotiating, I guess, um, this document towards, towards a ceasefire, uh, a resolution. But, um, but I would say that, um, first of all, I don't know if we want to get technical. I'm not really sure what dismantling of Hamas means. Um, I mean, I'm not, I, I just, I think it gets really muddy at that, that point. And I think to Counselor Ewan Campin's point where we're asking for a ceasefire first, I mean, I think we all agree that things are not gonna move forward without a change in, in leadership, uh, from the, on the Palestinian side as well as on the Israeli side. So, I, you know, I don't know that we're gonna get where we want to be with this. So, I won't support this amendment, um, although I do, you know, respect the spirit of it and, and, and the attempt. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor McLaughlin?
I guess, I, I feel like these, what we're talking about now just highlights like how absurd a lot of this is. It's like we're the Somerville City Council, we're talking about dismantling Hamas and Benjamin Netanyahu and getting two sides who just this past week refused a ceasefire to have a ceasefire. Uh, I want people in this community to feel safe and I want peace. Sure, let's get rid of Benjamin Netanyahu and Hamas.
We have a lot of business in front of us after this item, folks in the room. I'm going to ask again to respect our counselor's ability to negotiate and discuss this. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, through you, to the good counselor at large, I completely agree that, that both of those things should happen. Um, I have concerns with adding them to this resolution for a couple of reasons, and as the, the folks who are reading over my shoulder may have, if their eyes are really good, they'll have seen I, I had several versions that included surrender and dismantling and ending, and I couldn't quite find the right verb. And, and I think it's a, it's an excellent point that there's, as I, when I tried to say there are terrible people who are doing this, and I, I meant all of those terrible people that are, that have caused the circumstances, both at past and present, that, uh, that find us here. Um, I think there, whether there's technically legal concerns or at least theoretically legal concerns about a municipal legislative branch calling for the end of elected governments in any country, it's probably not where we want to go, even if I agree as in my personal life that I'd like to see both of those things happen. Um, so with immense respect, I, I won't support this, but, um, as, to echo the good counselor from Ward 3, also would like to see Hamas go away and would like to see a peaceful government in Israel that is able to, to find the, the lasting peace that we are calling for in this current draft.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Strezzo.
Well... I'm wondering if then we should make, should we make an amendment? This is what some of our residents have said would help people get to under, to, to, to prove that this is a collaboration of all of us working together. So, I am asking my colleagues to pull out that, that, uh, that sometimes hefting to, to accept that we have lots of members of our community and a lot of ways to get to peace. And I'm asking you to, to acknowledge that and support this. And if we take out Netanyahu, fine. I'm a little surprised that someone who, uh, to my colleague's point, that you say that you want to work for collaboration and all voices in, I'm, I'm including this, whether or not it includes Netanyahu. I mean, I do not support what he had administration at all. Um, but here it is for you. So, I, I don't understand why this wouldn't be accepted, because this is what some of the residents who feel, that they don't feel supported, would, would, it would feel better for them to accept that.
Madam President, I, I just request that the amendment be made in the form of a motion, and I'd like to call the question on it, please.
Okay. Counselor McLaughlin had his hand raised. Do you want it?
Same thing I was going.
Okay. So, let's call the question.
So, on the amendment that you see on your screen adding that the city council resolves, uh, excuse me, resolves that the city council demands a dismantling of Hamas as part of a ceasefire and for lasting peace and a dismantling of the Netanyahu administration. On the amendment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
No.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Sorry, I'm getting very confused at this point. Um, could you please, uh, Clerk Wells, explain again what's happening?
You're voting on the amendment that you see on the screen, so to add this text to the resolution, "Resolved that the city council demands a dismantling of Hamas as part of a ceasefire and for lasting peace and a dismantling of the Netanyahu administration." The resolution is not yet before you. It's just on this as an amendment to the resolution.
I think I'm going to abstain.
You can't.
You can't.
So, when was this part added? Is this the part...
Counselor Strezzo is proposing this right now. This is her motion to amend the resolution, to add this language.
I would, no.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Scott. Can we bump up his mic? Counselor Scott?
No.
Thank you. Counselor Mbah?
No.
Counselor Burnley?
Nay.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Panada Neufeld?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Counselor Ewan Campin?
No.
With five counselors in favor and six opposed, the motion is not approved. The amendment does not pass.
Madam President, I move the question on the motion, on the resolution.
Okay. We are moving to question on the motion. Again, I ask quiet in the chambers during this vote.
I'm gonna pull up the amendments one more time. So, motion has been made for the previous question, which is on the resolution that is attached to your agenda with these amendments that you see on the screen, the ones that were just adopted by the city council. So, the resolution as amended. On that motion, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes.
Counselor Burnley?
Aye.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
No.
Counselor Panada Neufeld?
No.
Counselor Ewan Campin?
Yes.
With nine counselors in favor and two opposed, the motion is approved and the resolution is adopted.
Everybody, we're in recess for ten minutes.
We have a long agenda that we have to start now. Thank you all for being here. You might. Let's call the roll for a quorum, please.
This is roll call. Councilor McLaughlin. Councilor Davis.
Here.
Councilor Wilson.
Present.
Councilor Said.
Present.
Councilor Scott.
Present. Present.
Councilor Mbah. Councilor. Probably. Councilor Burnley.
Present.
Councilor Klingon.
Present.
Councilor Strezzo.
Present.
Councilor Penada Newfeld. Councilor Ewan Campan.
Here.
With eight councilors present and three absent, we have a quorum.
Colleagues, that was stressful and intense, and I want to thank you all for your poise. Next item, please.
The next item is item 4.2, in order by Councilor Strezzo, that the Director of Planning, Preservation, and Zoning discuss the potential for density bonus incentives such as $150,000 to, excuse me, for homeowners to build affordable housing for rent or home ownership.
Did we miss 4.1? Sorry.
No, we did it while you.
Oh, I was out of the room. Apologies. Councilor Strezzo.
I ask that this be sent to Housing and Community Development.
So referred.
Item 4.3 is in order by Councilor Strezzo, that the Director of Health and Human Services provide an update on the communication efforts and rollout of the warming center, including the plan to inform Armory tenants and the plan for security and client assistance.
I ask this be sent to Housing and Community Development.
Item 4.4.
The whole council signs on, and that item is referred. Thank you.
All that are here, actually, that's. Item 4.4 is in order by Councilor Strezzo, that the Director of the Office of Housing Stability appear before the Housing and Community Development Committee to discuss the current status of residents facing displacement and the number of households seeking rental assistance.
Councilor Strezzo.
Housing and Community Development, please.
Housing and Community Development.
Item 4.5 is in order by Councilor Strezzo, that the Executive Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development discuss the maintenance plan for the Armory Building.
Councilor Strezzo.
Can you please send this to Housing and Community Development?
So referred.
Item 4.6 is a resolution by Councilor Strezzo, that the Administration, in conjunction with the Housing and Water and Sewer Departments, provide optional affordable water utility assessments in low-income housing units and in benevolent landlord and subsidized landlord housing whereby residents would pay their own water and sewer bills.
Councilor Strezzo.
I'm open to where this can go. Public Works, do you think? I guess, could this be referred? I'm sorry? Could we, please, I'm sorry, we need to be speaking through the chain, yeah, Chair. So, let's see.
I would recommend Housing and Community Development.
Yeah, yeah, I could see that in there. Okay, send it there, please.
So referred.
Item 4.7 is a resolution by Councilor Strezzo, that the Administration provide an update on plans for universal basic income, guaranteed basic income implementation and rollout.
Councilor Strezzo.
Can you send this to Equity?
This item is referred to the Committee on Equity, and Councilor Wilson wants to sign on. And were there others that I missed?
Actually, Mr. President, just a quick update. Stay tuned for news on this in the Finance Committee report to come.
Excellent.
Item 4.8 is in order by Councilor Ewan Campan, that the Commissioner of Public Works discuss with this city council how the sidewalk clearing pilot program is working this winter.
This item is referred to Public Utilities and Public Works.
Item 4.9 is in order by Councilor Ewan Campan, that the Director of Engineering install robust, permanent pedestrian crossing signage at the intersection of Vinyl and Highland Avenues, given the importance of this crosswalk for high school students and many others.
This sounds simple, but it's a little intractable, so I'd like to send it to committee. I'd like to refer this to traffic, and Councilor Wilson would sign on.
Mr. President.
Councilor Strezzo.
I was excited about this, seeing this one as well. Yeah, the crosswalk is completely worn off, and as I recall, Councilor Klingon saying not too long ago that it was recently painted, and I thought it was too, but it is, there is no signage. Additional to this corner, this intersection, a lot of people turn left, and I'm bringing this to the attention to be on the record, and because I'm talking with the Administration on what can be done about this. So when cars leave the exit of the driveway of the high school, there are two, not one, but two signs saying, "Don't turn left," onto Highland, and it is a continuous dangerous turn. So to bring attention, we have high school students, being high school students and crossing, you know, when and where they want in that intersection, whether or not cars are coming because they're teenagers. And then we have cars that are not supposed to be turning left, turning left on that as well, which is extremely dangerous, problematic. So bring that to the attention as well.
Excellent. Yes, we will discuss that as well in committee. Thank you.
Item 4.10 is a resolution by Councilor Ewan Campan, that the Administration explain the issues that are preventing Rivas Field from opening and how the process may be expedited.
The most recent, Rivas Field is the brand-new field beside the high school. It's not yet open to the public, to the kids at school. The most recent update that I've gotten has been that there's potential code issues, and normally I would just, you know, address this with conversations internally, but it's just been going on for a long time, and I'd just like to have a conversation on the record, so I'd like to refer this to Open Space.
Mr. President.
Councilor Davis, yeah.
Thank you. I can share a little bit of information, just based on the recent High School Building Committee meeting. There may be other reasons that I'm not remembering from prior committees, but one of the issues, I understand it, is that apparently the height of one of the walls doesn't meet code, and so there's a need to put a little, it was measured correctly on one side, but not on the other, and so we need to put a little bit of a railing to keep people from falling over, in theory. So that's one thing that is on the punches that's working. I can't say that that's the specific reason that it's not open, but certainly one could understand if that was the case. But that is something that's being, going to be corrected soon.
Yes, thank you. I would like that to be corrected before we even have to discuss it. Councilor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks for bringing this, Mr. President. I want to point out the urgency of this, because that field is about to play a really vital role for Somerville High and for community youth sports come springtime. The start of the spring season is less than two months away at this point, so let's prioritize this, please.
Next item, please. That item is referred to Open Space.
Item 4.11 is a resolution by Councilors Ewan Campan and Klingon, that the Administration discuss with this Council's Special Committee on School Building Facilities and Maintenance, whether the financial comparisons of various new school building scenarios have taken into consideration projected costs of creating new usages at the current Winter Hill and Brown school sites.
This is a long order, and I hope the statement is clear. It's a question I've gotten from a bunch of people who have heard from the city comparing the various costs and plans for Winter Hill, Brown at different locations, and there's obviously a cost component of that comparison. And the question I've heard from community members that I don't know the answer to is, what do we do with, if we do move it, what do we do with the old buildings? And is that cost included in our calculation? Obviously, the people doing this work are professionals. I assume that it is. I'd just like to have this conversation so that members of the public understand. So I ask that this be referred to the Committee on School Buildings.
Item 4.13 is in order by Councilors Said, Burnley, and Wilson, that the Director of Economic Development take the steps described within relative to the Armory Building.
Councilor Said.
I would like to have this, to lay this on the table and have this appear in our next meeting.
Excellent. This item is laid on the table, and we'll take it up at our next meeting.
Item 4.14 is in order by Councilor Mbah, that the Director of Parks and Recreation and the Director of Public Space and Urban Forestry report to this Council's Committee on Open Space, Environment, and Energy on the status of the parks and open spaces that have been completed or are under construction and planning as part of redevelopment projects.
Councilor Burnley wants to sign on. Councilor Mbah.
Thank you, Mr. President. The 2019 report of the Open Space Creation Task Force identifies more number of these spaces, which were then in progress, but since several of the expected spaces have been completed, so why others are still underway or lagging. An additional several spaces not previously inventoried have since been secured as community benefits or conditions of planning board approval. So it would be good to know the status. So you can approve it and send it to Open Space, Environment, and Energy.
That item is approved and referred to the Committee on Open Space.
Item 4.15 is a communication by Councilors Penada Newfeld and Ewan Campan, in her capacity as Chair of the Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters Committee, conveying new guidelines for discussion for interviewing applicants in committee.
Pay attention, everyone, because this is going to come into play tonight. Councilor Penada Newfeld.
Correct, Mr. President. Thank you. So this is an item that, actually, Council President and I have discussed, and he's co-sponsoring on this. I hope you all open the item to read through this, but I will give you the gist. So now, again, as Chair of the Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters, I've been reflecting on how to ensure our committee doesn't become an additional barrier to participation in our government in our city. We've talked extensively, many of you, when you ran for office, myself included, shared how important it is to diversify our boards and commissions with our residents who live here, who have the lived experience to give back to their communities. We have been on a confirmations rampage the last couple of years, and, you know, have seen so many incredible candidates come before us for our boards and commissions, and have received feedback that, you know, we are an intimidating council, as many of our bodies of government are, both in committee and in this room. And so trying to remain inclusive, trying to ensure that we invite participation in our city government, we're really proposing this as a conversation tonight, to see what the pulse is of the folks in this room, of this council, of the will of the body, to consider that the CAPM Committee would only refer to committee and interview those applicants for permit granting boards and civil service positions. I'll read those adjudicatory boards in a moment. For applicants to non-permit granting boards and commissions, I recommend we consider them at our regular council meetings. You know, those items have resumes and information attached, and we could approve them here. If there are members of the body who wish to send particular applicants to committee, we, of course, will honor that. So those permit granting boards are the Board of Assessors, Board of Health, Condo Review Board, Election Commission, Licensing Commission, Planning Board, Redevelopment Authority, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, and of course, all civil service positions that come before us. This will allow us to fill positions more quickly, not have the lag time that we're seeing, and of course, ensure that we're not a barrier to participation in government. So this is meant to be a discussion, again, see how the body feels about these potential guidelines before we have our first meeting next week, and before I put that agenda together for that first meeting, and potentially put this in action tonight. So with that, I welcome comments from the counselor.
Thank you. I see we have comments from Councilor Burnley and Councilor Wilson. Before that, I just want to add, as the co-sponsor, oh, you want to co-sponsor? No.
It's a communication.
You can't co-sponsor a communication, counselor. Let me just, I want to thank Chair Penada Newfeld for leading on this and running this committee. I just want to briefly say why I'm so supportive of this. Just to basically, there's too much stuff goes to this committee. By far, we all know that. This is a very simple way. Anything that's permit granting, those people need to get discussed in committee. For, you know, what we think of as the volunteer commissions, where members of the community are coming, unless there's some specific issue that people really have, like, these folks should get approved on the spot, is my strong opinion. And I just want to add as a bit of context, this committee didn't use to do nothing, with all due respect to our predecessors. They were a rubber stamp. After the 2016 election, Councilor Scott was the chair, and I was the vice chair, and we sat down on a weekend and said, "Here's our new guidelines. We're going to send everybody to committee. You know, we expect these documents, et cetera, et cetera." And that was important, and we did a lot of important work. And also, we made some mistakes, and this was very clearly one of them. I have talked to Councilor Scott. He strongly agrees with that. These rules were never written in stone. They were written in a Google Doc, you know, in a backyard. So I'm strongly supportive. Councilor Wilson, then Councilor Burnley.
Councilor Scott.
And Councilor Scott.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleague, the Chair of CAPM, for bringing this forward. Having served on that committee the last two years, I think this is a great idea. It always seemed really backward to me that we get these committee members coming forward to do these, you know, the volunteer commissions, and they come before us. And meanwhile, as we discussed during Charter, you know, we have directors and city solicitors, you know, who are just, who just go into the job, and we, you know, with no questions asked. So, yeah, it's, I always, the past two years, it always, I don't know, it seemed like it would have been rude to not ask questions of people who gave their time to come before us. So I made a point of asking a question of every single person who came before. I tried to make it a, you know, softball question, but like, for some people, it can be really stressful. I can remember appearing before a committee in my pre-council life, and it's intimidating. We heard tonight, people, I mean, it was a packed room, you know, but it can be really intimidating coming and appearing before a body and being questioned, even if they are softball questions. We had a candidate get anxious and drop out mid-committee meeting for a body that we're really eager to fill with people. So, yes, it's hard to find volunteers for these multi-member bodies. Removing a stressful step of that process is a good idea, and I'm just excited to see this go forward. So, thanks.
Councilor Burnley.
Thank you through the Chair. I am now going to be speaking and co-sponsoring through my words. I've learned tonight that I need to learn the rules, and that you can't co-sponsor communication. But I will say, I am in support of this, and it's not because I, you know, I want less work. I'm a very big believer that this council should hoard the power that we, the little power that we have, and not give it away for future councils. Having said that, and having served on this committee for the brief amount of time I have, I've seen from members of this community the impact, in effect, that it can have to have to go through a litany of questions from several people who have authority and power to decide whether that community member gets to partake in the civic process through these commissions, and how intimidated some folks have gotten from that, through no fault of their own, and in fact, through choices that this council makes through our process. And as Councilor Penada Newfeld referenced, I am a very big believer in accessibility, and when we, as a local government, make it difficult, if not impossible, for all of our, the members of our community to take part in our processes, then we are failing them. So I'm hopeful that this will make it a bit easier for everyone to take part, and you can believe that there will be times that I send some people to committee if I do have concerns, but I'm hopeful that this will both expedite the process as well as make it a more welcoming committee for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. I will keep it brief. You said very much what I wanted to say on this, which is, the reforms that were made after that 2017 election, I think were absolutely vital. I'm very proud of them, and I really think this is a change that is long overdue. So I appreciate it. I'm fully supportive of it, and grateful that we will continue to default on adjudicatory bodies going to committee, but for the rest of this, let's get the show on the road. So thank you very much for the work of yourself and Chair Penada Newfeld, and thank you.
Seeing no further, oh, sorry, Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Be real brief, so as, I think, the only member of the committee that sat on this, or the council that sat on this whole committee when it was, I will confess, a rubber stamp, and I think as being the first one who said, "I'm not voting for anyone unless I've seen a resume before I show up." And as you noted, that we then, in the next session, with a different makeup, took these rules and changed the way the committee works. And I think that was an incredible success of the last, of this generation of city council. It changed the way the city does business. It changed a lot of the old, it adjusted a lot of the challenges that our city government had, to put it that way. But I completely agree that we, you know, there's room for some adjustment. So, fully supportive of this. The one thing I would note, and this isn't a rule, it's just a communication, so, you know, we don't think we have to change anything, but I think constables, I would assume, would be also a position that maybe doesn't fall within what we've said here, that I would obviously also want for, I think, reasons that should be obvious to go to committee, but otherwise, would support this. I appreciate the intent.
Excellent. Councilor Mbah.
Just to say thank you to Councilor Newfeld for putting this forward. I would like to sign on to it. Thanks.
That item is approved.
Item 4.16 is in order by Councilor McLaughlin, that the Director of Inspection Services update the Ward 1 counselor regarding any fines associated with 24 to 28 Broadway, the former Taco Locos site, due to repeated cleanliness and business violations within the last two years.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Oh, Mr. President, I'm sorry. Didn't realize this meeting's still going on. Thought we solved a lot of problems tonight. I have some problems in my neighborhood as well. They're not global scale, but they're pretty important to my constituents, and I have a number of orders here. These are regular occurring issues that have still not been addressed, or maybe they have been addressed, and I'm not aware of it. Multiple vacant properties on my street, don't shovel their walks, trash everywhere, homeless people dying in them, as I've talked about before, and I'm just wondering, like, are these people even being punished at all? I talk to ISD regularly about it. I'm under the impression they are, but I've never actually seen the evidence for it. So now I'm asking for that evidence. I want to know, are these groups being ticketed for how much and why, and which one are we at? Right now, we're talking about the Taco Locos site, which is an empty lot that's being used by Broadway Break right across the street to store vehicles illegally. ISD has told me that what they're doing is illegal. I want to know if they're being fined, and I want them to stop doing that, because the developer, Highland Development, owns Broadway Break and the Taco Locos site, so apparently it's more profitable to just let these buses or these vehicles stay there and get money for Broadway Break and eat the fines. They want to host a community meeting to develop the Broadway Break site, and I told them, "You better clean up your site before we do that, because I'm not having a meeting and having the residents yell at me about your messy site." And they just completely ignored that. So now I'm getting their attention in a public way. So that's what this item's about, and others. I would take it up on Public Health and Safety, because I'm on that committee. If you think Public Utilities makes more sense, I'd accept that as well.
Public Health and Public Safety is fine. Let's refer it there.
Item 4.17 is in order by Councilor McLaughlin, that the Director of Inspection Services update the Ward 1 counselor regarding any fines associated with 112 Broadway, formerly the East End Grill, for any violations within the last 10 years.
Councilor McLaughlin.
10 years. I picked that number because it's been vacant for 10 years, and because people have died in this building, and because they don't shovel their walks, and because they leave dumpsters full of trash in the back, even though there's nothing going on in the building. Public Utilities, Public Works. No, Public Health and Safety, please.
That item is referred to Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 4.18 is in order by Councilor McLaughlin, that the Director of Inspection Services update the Ward 1 counselor regarding any fines associated with 176 to 182 Broadway, formerly Patsy's Pastries, in the last 10 years.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Another property where someone has died, and I go by there, their sidewalk is just frozen solid, the owner, well, I believe the ownership has changed, but permitted, allowed to build whatever they wanted to build there. Those permits have lapsed, no update whatsoever. I'm wondering if they get inticketed. Public Health and Safety, please.
That item is referred to Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 4.19 is in order by Councilor McLaughlin, that the Director of Inspection Services inspect 112 Broadway, 176 to 182 Broadway, and 24 to 28 Broadway for violations, and report the findings to the Ward 1 City Counselor.
Councilor McLaughlin.
I'm trying to remember what properties they are. There's so many of them. Public Health and Safety, please.
Public Health and Public Safety.
These are all the properties combined, because I want to know what's going on with every property.
That item is referred to Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 4.20 is in order by Councilor McLaughlin, that the Director of Inspection Services address trash and other violations by the Rent-A-Center on Broadway.
Public Health and Safety, please.
Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 4.21 is in order by Councilor McLaughlin, that the Tree Warden inspect and trim the tree at 11 Melvin Street.
Councilor McLaughlin. That item is approved.
Item 4.22 is in order by Councilor McLaughlin.
I'll move to wave the readings of 4.23.
22, because I didn't read it yet.
22, 28, and move for approval.
Those items are approved.
Mr. President, can I cosign 423, please?
Councilor Wilson co-sponsors 4.23. Before we get to the committee reports, Councilor McLaughlin would like to discharge an item from land use, item 231625, which is a powderhouse zoning item. Counselor, should we read it?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought it was coming after Finance. Can you maybe just pull it up?
Oh, hurry.
Okay. This is a zoning ordinance, amending Section 7.2.7 of the zoning ordinances to add shared workspace and arts education to Table 727, permitted uses.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President, for remembering this item for me. So I think Council Penada Newfeld can give a much better explanation. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
So on the motion to discharge that item from committee, Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilor Said.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes, please.
Councilor Burnley.
Aye.
Councilor Klingon. Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Penada Newfeld.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With 10 councilors in favor and one absent, that item is now before the council.
Klingon, the next campaign, the absence on that vote is coming up, man. Okay, on the item, it's now before us, right? Councilor McLaughlin, go ahead.
So this is a basic change of use, and I'll leave it to Council Penada Newfeld to explain it, because she put all the work in. The reason why we're taking this up tonight and not in a land use committee meeting is I can't hold one until February 15th, I believe, and we have some really heavy items, including the Summer Nova proposal to discuss. So I don't want this item that should be non-controversial and a great positive use to have to wait that long. So that's all I have to say on this item.
Councilor Penada Newfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilor McLaughlin. The close notes version is the old Powderhouse School in my ward, which is now known as the Cola Building, has its own special snowflake zoning. And so as commercial businesses, there's been some commercial spaces that have been vacant since it's opened. It's a mixed-use commercial residential space, and this new business that opened is a clayworks company, and they allow folks to come in and make their art, and they're hoping in the future to do some workshops to allow people to learn new skills, and so this zoning would allow them to do that. So it's pretty, pretty simple. But of course, you know, we want to make sure that it went through all the motions, and it came through right around the holidays or at the end of last year. So in order for it not to delay, I hope we can approve this tonight.
Excellent. So just for new councilors. So just for new counselors, zoning items go through a particularly detailed process. They're referred to land use. There's a public hearing, that already happened. The planning board then makes a recommendation to us, that has already happened, so, but this item, it was mildly discussed in the public hearing. It wasn't really deliberated on, but it has the support of the Ward Counselor, totally appropriate to bring it up at the normal council and move it forward, it's straightforward, it has the support of the community. So unless there's further questions, let's call the rolls.
Okay, so we'll do three roll call votes on this one. The first is to approve the amendment to Section 727 of the zoning ordinances. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Panada Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With 11 counselors in favor, that item is approved. And now, to enroll the amendment to Section 727 of the zoning ordinances. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Panada Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With 11 counselors in favor, that item is enrolled. And finally, on ordainment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Panada Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With 11 counselors in favor, that item is ordained.
Next item, please.
Item 6A is a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on January 23rd, 2024.
Counselor Wilson.
As my colleague from Ward 1 likes to say, "Now the real meeting begins." Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. The Finance Committee held the first committee meeting of this new city council on Tuesday night with four members present, and Counselor Ewan Campin temporarily replacing Counselor Scott for a portion of the meeting for quorum purposes. We went through a 26-item agenda in 50 minutes. From the duration of that meeting, you can gather that these requests from the mayor were almost all extremely straightforward. 11 of them were explained by staff memos that were all uploaded to Legisdar for colleagues in the public to read. One item was withdrawn due to it being a duplicate request submitted in error. There were minimal questions from the committee on the remaining items. I do want to highlight a few things quickly for colleagues tonight. The roughly $261,000 being appropriated from the GLX Developer Contributions Fund for the potential pedestrian bridge between Inner Belt and Brick Bottom at the East Somerville T Station will cover the cost of a project rep, at least through the design phase. Director Gallagani confirmed that the eventual cost of a pedestrian bridge will be between 20 and 30 million, so roughly, you're talking about a 10% design, that's not 10%, that's way less than 10%. Never, forget what I said. Scratch that. We expect to finish off the high school punch list by the fall, so that's good news for everyone waiting for the high school to finally be completed. The IAM Asset Management Program will integrate all the data collected in DPW's amazing Microsoft Access Database, for any colleagues who, like me, got a demo of that database from DPW. So no labor will be wasted, that'll all be imported. Our city clerk is about to embark on some very exciting digitizing and modernizing of our archives. The full process is going to take multiple years for it to roll out citywide, but we're very excited to see that get going here. We had some questions about the Police Department's Special Response Team, specifically details surrounding overtime for the team and the mission statement for the team, and as mentioned earlier, if you're wondering about that gift acceptance of $5,000 from the Cummings Foundation, dwarfed by the 2.5 million in ARPA funds that was put toward a UBI, Universal Basic Income pilot, there is a legal requirement that there be some component of charitable donation in the funding for the pilot in order for us to be able to give away money like that, so that's what that was. That's us meeting the legal requirement. Everything else is captured very nicely in Clerk Wodzowski's excellent minutes, so I'd encourage everyone to read that. Finally, with Counselor Burnley replacing Counselor Panada Newfeld on the committee, I just want to thank our colleague from Ward 7 for her two years of work on finance, slogging through budget season in 2022, and then doing all those meetings last year as a new mom. Kudos. With that, I ask that you accept this committee report as submitted, and, Mr. President, while I'm on the mic, I'll move to waive the readings of Items 71 to 79 and 10-6 from tonight's agenda, and ask that these be sent to Finance. Thanks.
That committee report, we need a roll call vote, don't we?
We do.
Can we lay it on the table for approval at the end?
No, because then we have two more items to come before.
Okay. Roll call, please.
So, on the Finance Committee Report of January 23rd, 2024, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Panada Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that committee report is approved, and that puts two items before the council for roll call votes. The first of those is Item 23-1864, Grant of Easement and Maintenance Agreement for U.S. Union Square D21 Owner LLC for 10 Prospect Street and Somerville Ave. On that item, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Recused.
Oh, thank you. Counselor Mbah.
Who?
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Panada Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that committee report is approved, and that puts two items before the council for roll call votes. The first of those is Item 23-1864, Grant of Easement and Maintenance Agreement for U.S. Union Square D21 Owner LLC for 10 Prospect Street and Somerville Ave. On that item, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Panada Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that item is approved. And then, we just did the sevens, so that will bring us to Item 710, A Request of the Mayor Requesting Confirmation of the Appointment of Austin Brower to the Board of Elections Commissioners.
This one goes to committee.
President, this one goes to committee.
Referred to the confirmation of appointments.
Thank you. And the next item will be Item 9.1.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. I would like to move to waive the readings of 9.1 through 9.4, as well as 10.11, and ask that they be approved.
Those items are approved.
Let me grab that, 10, 11. All right, the next item is Item 9.5, Public Communication from Five Residents Submitting Comments Regarding the Proposed Zoning Ordinance Climate and Equity Innovation Subarea Overlay District.
That is placed on file with a copy to land use, and unless there's an objection, I'll waive the readings of 9, 6, 7, and 8, and place those on file.
Item 10.1 is in order by Counselor Burnley, that the Director of the Office of Sustainability and Environment work with this council and Green and Open Somerville to develop a job description for an invasive species position to spearhead outreach, education, and citywide invasive plant species removal, and to allocate funding for such a position in the fiscal year 2025 budget.
This is almost a budget priority. Counselor Panada Newfeld, Davis, and Wilson would like to sign on, and Said, and Mbah.
Not Jesse, though.
Sign on. We got Klingon. Would you like that to go to committee?
Yes, please, through the chair. I brought something very similar during last term. This is the plant czar, the invasive plant czar, and there is a real strong commitment from our community to rid Somerville of invasive species, and that's going to require partnership between the city and the community organizations that are doing the bulk of the work. And I think we should try to come together as much as we can to develop an actual position around this and get the ball rolling before budget season drives us all up a wall. So, that's what I hope to do with the administration's collaboration. Thank you.
Excellent. Let's refer this to open space. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
All right, and I'd like to cosponsor as well, please.
Item 10.2 is in order by Counselor Burnley, that the Director of Economic Development update this council on efforts taken to inform relevant business owners about the newly implemented closed captioning ordinance.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. I would like for this to go to licenses and permits. This is just some follow-up from some great work that we did again last term, passing a closed captioning ordinance that affects a myriad businesses across the city, from bars to gyms to, everything is essentially except for movie theaters. And, well, it gets really technical once you start looking into it, but one of the great things about it is that it is already in effect. We passed it, and the effective date was January 2nd. It is January past 2nd, and so I'm really interested in, again, collaborating with the administration, seeing what outreach they've done to local businesses to be, to be ensure that they're in compliance, and if we can, as a city, develop any flyers or materials in order to inform, that would be wonderful, and I would also just note, again, that this ordinance also empowers the Commission for Persons with Disabilities, so I am also looking forward to partnering with this, with them moving forward as well. So, thanks.
Excellent. That item is referred to the Committee on Equity.
License and permit.
License and permit, yes. Yeah, forgive me. License and permit, please.
Item 10.3 is in order by Counselor Panada Newfeld, that the city solicitor appear before the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters to discuss the scope and role of the committee in confirming various appointments.
Counselor Panada Newfeld.
Thank you. I'd like just to go to the committee, mostly new committee members, and so just setting the foundation before we start confirmation appointments.
Very wise. This item is referred to Confirmation of Appointments.
Item 10.4 is in order by Counselor Strezzo, that the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management report on leaks at the Benjamin Brown School and any exterior envelope damages in the past six months, and any actions being taken to address such leaks and damages, including the recently dislodged downspout.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thanks. Can you send this to the school buildings committee?
This item is referred to the Committee on School Buildings.
Item 10.5 is in order by Counselor Strezzo, that the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management report on leaks at the Arts at the Armory Building and any exterior envelope damages in the past six months, and any actions being taken to address such leaks and damages, including the recently dislodged downspout.
Counselor Strezzo.
That's a typo. Wasn't supposed to say the recently dislodged downspout on that. Can you please send this to, do you think Public Works, Public Utilities would be the best location?
This item is referred to Public Works and Public Utilities.
Right.
Item 10.7 is a request of the mayor, requesting confirmation of the appointment of Jason Mackey to the Human Rights Commission.
Seeing no discussion, that item is approved.
Dun, dun, dun.
Item 10.8 is a request of the mayor, requesting confirmation of the appointment of Martin Polygon to the Human Rights Commission.
That item is approved.
Mr. President, we can waive the readings of 10.9 and 10.10 and approve them?
Excellent. Those items are approved.
Item 10.12 is a new garage license for John's Auto Sales at 181 Somerville Ave.
That item is referred to committee?
Yes, I'd like to kick the tires on that. Thank you.
Urgent license and permits.
Item 10.13 is a public communication from Meriwether Burris submitting comments regarding ceasefire.
That item is laid on the table, as is the next one, and I expect on our next agenda we will have 1,100 of these, so they'll be collated.
Do you really want them laid on the table?
What?
Do you really want them laid on the table? You want them placed on file.
Placed on file.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda, Mr. President.
Are there late items?
Fantastic question. I do have a late communication sent to the incorrect email, but lucky I found it, that